And so we'll do the call to know on the 1011. Your review, you want to start with this or?
Through the mayor, I'm just going to share the presentation, but we also made old fashioned copies. In case that would be helpful. So would people like old fashioned copies?
I'm so old fashioned, I already have my own.
Okay, well.
Is there another?
Oh, maybe that was more than one.
Oh, it wasn't.
Oh, maybe that was more than one.
So Craig and I have been working on the adoption implementation plan as a. Given the topic that we have at hands today and next week. And within the in the insight by the planning commission and their colleagues now. What we have tonight is both a preliminary outline of the adoption implementation plan. And related recommendations that are designed to. Integrate many of the planning commission recommended steps. What we focused on were the items in their memo. This does not address the separate.
Yeah.
So. Couple of, do you have the?
It's showing on Zoom, but it's not showing on this screen.
So. I don't know who is. There, great. Yeah, that's great. I'll just recall that slide and make sure it's on. So here, Dr. Ori and both, there's a lot of the afternoon stuff there that the county and all the discussion. So for the public's benefit, GP is the general plan, by the way, known as HE. The MMRP for the mitigation monitoring and reporting programs which are part of the ISMD. Document. The planning commission.
A breaking news, can I, which is that the public did not see us.
Oh. Good day, AV.
My, I'm at the town council meeting by phone or by Zoom.
Oh, alright, okay.
One, so what we do about that?
We have 24.
Who is not, that's Carol.
Adrian has another computer. She's going to leave as a panelist and see if she can join as a member of the public.
Carrie Chin, one of our staff members is on and she says she can see us.
Okay, right.
I can also see and hear the first five minutes.
So if you can double tap. And then I'll be going up to something. No, no worries.
I just confirmed from Cara, she can hear and see us as well through the presentation.
Alright, I'll keep going and get through the definitions. What I mentioned, do you think the planning commission colleagues now, he's been doing that with code. And so we have a document plan. It's the post-AGE plan. And so council, housing element subcommittee, Craig. You're good. Okay, thank you. And. We'll keep going. Slide three.
Okay.
So with apologies for needing to present this about the three days or four days. What we've been trying to do is we need to gather some people to consider when we're. Deciding on adopting the ISMD. The goal, the overview, if we're summarizing that for food briefing. That currently with or after adoption of the town's updated. The goal overall is to support and enhance the town's ability to accommodate additional housing in accordance with their general. The sources of these items are various discussions during meetings of the committee and commission. And the town council and the county alone, which without the name. As well as initiatives that the subcommittee pregnant to have been included in the with of the local. Note, very important, this is not the goal who is having on as a document. It's summarize this topic, but we suggest that we decide we're willing to commit to. And where those items could be addressed and we'll get into that in shortly. On the full post housing element plan. We envision it as being defined in more detail than currently with or with integrated after the housing element adoption by the town. Slide four. The goal of all of this tonight is to discuss and align on which of the actions proposed by the. Planning commission now and the subcommittee of the town council to take. In which documentation being undertaken and by which means they should be implemented. It's a preliminary discussion and the topic includes those listed here on slide four. We'll go through, well, we'll get to those details, but to give you a preview. We've got housing site inventory follow up and sunrise detail. Donor is designed with new actions and related home plan updates. Equal guidelines and what we're calling local guidance, which is the design feature component suggested by the planning. Supplemental safety measures for the housing element. The impact of the housing element on services and infrastructure. Housing funds to develop quality for use of inclusionary funds. Encouraging community and civic engagement in housing issues and developing housing element information for quality. So before we go ahead and introduce some of the details.
No, I forgot to sort of dive into the meat of it. I think to summarize it. I think it's the subject is expectation that tonight we're going to talk about this. For some kind of approval at the next meeting. That was sort of my general thought on how this would be, how it would be structured.
And we were envisioning this being after the presentation on the more technical aspect of the ISMD, so. There's going to be a little bit of detailing of what we're covering here versus in our presentation. So in slide five. So this is the housing site inventory follow up. It has two primary purposes, evaluating proposed sunrise opportunity sites. And for the public, probably understand that this sunrise is. Mechanism by with development at Dorothy Ford Park in open space. Will be delayed while we look for alternative sites if any of them. Before development starts in order to meet our revenue requirements by using the Dorothy Ford Park in open space. The longer term planning effort here would be to use information gathered in that effort. To think really more specifically along term about the town's housing needs and strategy for accommodating future housing. Looking forward to both green cycle and housing update cycle as well and what do we need in the town for what the state wants. So where will we propose this to be placed in the various documents that are going to be reviewed for potential adoption? The housing element we're ready to cover for the sunrise because we're going to be talking about the duration of the sunrise provision. When we get to the technical presentation. But there is a sense of identity sites for the Dorothy Ford Park in open space. Before an RFP process to manage and develop that site. And the quick doc and county element room which contains more details on exactly what this will entail. And when that's adopted within 30 days after adoption of the housing element, you'll see a lot of the detail here. We're going to be looking also at integrating the AU working group efforts or two with this effort as well. So there's two, two areas that we want to cover in terms of profits, how it would work. And this is the level of detail we're trying to get to at least directionally to see how this would work. And play out with the time frame. So for the sunrise opportunity, one is around running to make it as successful and as ever as possible. So within three months after housing element adoption, you have a subcommittee. To start preliminary work, coordinating with the planning staff. To identify potential alternative sites or other programs that may help us address the requirements. That are currently focused on being embodied in the Dorothy Ford Park. The subcommittee would conduct initial outreach to the community, have a public meeting. Remind people of what this effort, which will be sensitive, is going to be about. And also outreach to owners of property that may be willing to help us evaluate and adopt alternatives. Then no later than month nine, it will have to be about the element. We establish the IHOP to be the support for outreach. It will contribute to the town committee, commission and council members as well as town residents. Staff and consultants would be needed to support this effort and the discuss, evaluate and produce opportunities. Look at financial property right, you know, the relevant potential impediments and other information that needs to guide. Discussion of alternative sites. In light of the town ethos and our general plan. How do we do the control down the way? The IHOP committee would evaluate opportunities. Also, if there are no alternate sites. How can we maximize the effort at Dorothy Ford Park and open space in terms of preserving what we all love about it? The natural feeling, the ability of the public to enjoy that area and feel. If you can figure out and what was the cost of doing that. Alright, this would be embodied in the future that the other element is complete adoption plan. The longer term effort under item two would be after we get through the initial sunrise. Planning period essentially former working group for IHOP committees to focus on conducting.
Your, you need to switch the slides to the next one.
To focus proactively on longer term town effort themes. And we'd look to ongoing efforts to be a working group, work product and then ongoing efforts if there are any. To really develop our best hand of AU and day AU and. The effort would also include developing policy and approaches to support those other. Types of programs and housing opportunities, including fee waivers, reduction incentives to rent in affordable rates. Tracking information to show ECD that in fact we spend our trip are going to be available at the right income level. To meet our revenue number, the amount of towns own housing fees regardless of. The revenue numbers that we have next time around. And then we want to make this ongoing process so through an initial effort, every quarter we would update. And add to the site, take site as well, but this is not going to be a small effort in a one time shot. We're going to be ongoing the effort to understand what we are and what, what alternatives we have. And the comment here, this is the what's the goal. And it's to maximize the sunrise provision versus hormones. To identify alternatives to developing the residential park in open space. While retaining as much of the aesthetic recreational and natural attributes. While complying with our housing element, we not commitments as much as possible. We want to understand the costs of doing all of that. As part of the effort and establish a continual evaluation of that. What I think many would admit, it's felt like a time constraint, rush. Of the, think about housing in a constrained timeframe than publicized stage. That topic wants, the biggest topic is most extensive effort. So Craig, do you have any other? Ways that I can cover or contest and see if one of them is that the one by one of the book off.
Yeah, so I was going to say, this is the structure of all the topics. If we're going to be. The basic action and what the place media is, what the processes, what the comments are. They're all structured in this way. And I was going to suggest that while we go through this first pass, there's not going to be the time to clarify the questions. I mean, we just think about it, we go through one at a time and then, you know, a couple of comments. And then when we come back, then we can have a discussion, you know, going back to again and have a. Comprehensive discussion among council members. Does that seem reasonable? Then we just do the clarifying questions as we go now. Yeah.
Okay, so Simon, we have um, we don't agree. The second topic though on slide seven, unless you're. Or unless they're already in the public room. Yeah, oh, sure. They're just clarifying. So in. Process, item one, I just want to clarify, I believe this is your. Confirm that for this one, it is just a subcommittee out of the town councils. To get it out of the game and grow. Well, I definitely would ask on a part two. How do you guys see the process that I was saying once they don't look, basically you know that in the housing element. Need the process. How do you see it? Maybe, maybe this isn't to be worked out later and about that, if that's fine too, but if you have thoughts right now. I would see this process works together on work, working differently, different. Well, first, they did so much work at with the staff, but we have a very different starting point for that. It is on itself extremely helpful and. Part 10 would be to continue that analysis that was done in leverage it, but extend it out. So what didn't we have? You can have to make this work. So the idea would be to lower it. And yeah, this is an outline and I would expect the housing element plan to get into that next level of detail. In your picture.
Then I would, one, one clear follow up is obviously when you get to that point that you have a scope of, you know, this is what you did for the original one before they. Yeah, I guess that would be. Absolutely great. Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, and our expectation that you guys will be imposed. Normally the plan itself, whereas it would put the outline.
We can have the last part of two. Donor is designing with new actions and related general communities. So the action is within six months after adoption of the housing element. If you discuss and adopt the initiative data to ensure consistency and fidelity of the house element with the general plan. And develop effective design criteria, deliver town design guidelines for use and compliance with state requirements for certain future development. With need of that criteria that are consistent with the general plan. The placement of this would be the housing element. It already resides in program 11C. The need for objective criteria, this is the embodying, this is part of the overall set of endeavors to be taken. And as well as more detail with adoption. So the process here, the planning staff and the children would, would correct elements with team. Relating to the zoning changes and effective design criteria would start developing proposal. That would be submitted to the beginning position and to the town council recommendation and adoption. It's important to have public input and learn it. So we would envision some public awareness education and comment meetings. After the planning commission more formed the proposal and ideas. And that would require some support by staff and all this, but we would want the public to be aware and have the opportunity to comment on. Those significant changes and the exact criteria. And the overall comment is that the town does need to adopt something changes. We're doing some of that in this housing element, but, but more refinement will be needed. And the effective design review guidelines are going to be needed. Those, because we can't have subjective criteria for certain types of development are going to be a critical means by which we. Continue where it can repeat those while allowing and enabling their path to housing development. The timeline and sequence is going to be left out more in the to change the plan. And if there are more needs and updates needed in light of all this, you could all have to take. That then you could decide to adopt them as part of our overall new plan review cycle. Unless there's a legal requirement to do it earlier. So that's that topic. I'll see if it. Thank you.
This is all I understand. I mean, we, we will be doing zoning changes. Meaning in that one second, is this sort of a bottom beyond, you know, this is sort of just the world that's already kind of.
So there's zoning changes now. My understanding was that the planning mission, oh, we're starting to do a lot of. Zoning modifications needed and then even the scope of that effort being quite extensive. We focused in on what is needed to get the housing element approved.
Well, we have, there's, I mean, there are so many changes that, that were, we delayed specifically that we thought. So that's, that's, but there's, you're talking about, there's just.
Yeah, the criteria, if, once you have. The zoning thing, the other thing is for new development and more can probably speak to this in a more informed way. There are, you can't be cast objective. Right? So this is developing what additional effective criteria when we develop it comes in. Are we going to articulate to developers who are residents who want to have a.
And that, and that was, that, that wasn't just as part of the process, something we would be doing.
It has been anticipated as part of the process. So this is just capturing that and making it all in one place. So this is just capturing that and making it all in one place and providing a little bit more clarity about what people should expect.
And then the other thing I have, just to make it clear, you're going to see a few, in a few of these as part of the process where we talk about, you know, a meeting for parents. And our goal was to create these meetings typically after that was presented to the town body so that there's some need. But then the meeting would be meant to be more of a discussion or some kind of open house, a place where the public can interact. Before it was what we were after rather than what we have when we're in the confines of a planning commission or a town council. So that when you see these additional meetings on public awareness, that, that is the structure we're expecting.
And more details.
And have more detail. That did point again, give you the flavor of what we expected. Meant to be a little bit more of an open discussion rather than this very like, give me your three minutes to comment.
Right. This slide eight, the sequel topic. So two things here. We need within six months after the housing element adoption. And these timeframes are to let people have a reader as well as, or as soon as possible. So these, these are guidelines and six months after the housing adoption, we would have local sequel guidelines established under state laws and something that that we should do anyway. And you can get off, tell us there's something that they would expect to do within the timeframe. And then equal access to housing adoption. We would establish what the PNA commission calls designing review features, which I found to be a confusing phrase. But what it actually means is we're calling it local guidance. But what it is, is a further articulation of aesthetics, recreation, public services, traffic and wildfire safety considerations to guide future developments. And in order to do this, because establishing threshold sounds like it's going to be a hard thing to do. There are other jurisdictions that have known this that we would start by looking at other jurisdictions and what they've done and how they've done it. And there's a couple of amendments here. And we thought as a starting point to enhance our by a MND, you know, criteria that we're going to consider for adoption. These are going to be tailored to our locality and ideally articulate what we call valley. They want to be as an important factor in future development. We propose that these go as an end of the MMRP and a consequence to the MMRP. We use this as an important factor. So the proposal is to articulate that it's going above and beyond the I F M D requires. And allow us to enhance based on our locality for these important features. And in terms of the process, the planning gap and the. You and I have a pretty glowing discussion, not constrained by the three minute time clock. And it can be more of a state feedback. All right, and the comments, the next slide, good topic. Item one is necessary to provide with paper comments, you know, should be, I think, practically straightforward. Item two is to try and clarify, standardize, acknowledge these decision making on environmental view for future development. It's known in cancer measures in the current I F M D, short of others. It was a ground.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the guidelines and features be right from the fiction public or in efficient manner. And then we would have been published with, with the importance to a lot of community that we don't see in public in terms of public. And if there are any developments that maybe needed, it can be either pointing to the down next recycle and that comes up as a part of the value.
The only other thing I was thinking is we recognize that secret doesn't apply to a lot of the building of town. But we felt that this was important because the places it does apply are going to be for this type of construction that we never had in terms of mobile family housing. So we thought it would be really critical that the town, we spent some time reviewing it and thinking about it in that light. So that was part of the reason that the, you know, critical ad, even though, you know, it's only going to apply to the smaller set of, you know, P U Ds and the mobile down stuff.
Are the six and eight month plan frames, are they, are they practical? For the, the real.
We believe they are more complex. On this, but we did consult with her on item one and item two is more holistic. But we thought it would be practical. Any comments, Laura?
The first item, I think, is definitely practical. The second one will depend on our ability to secure consultants and their ability to do the work in the timeframe, those types of things. But it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, yes, in a model.
Yeah, and I would say the critical thing here is we're trying not to reinvent the wheel. That we believe that there's stuff out there we can find and just then modify to.
Yeah, so I'm convinced it's the same as what was one of the, um, uh, car brothers. And so if that's the case, that one would, I haven't been to a proper place yet, so I'm trying to relate and figure out what it really means. And there was reference there to local threshold, which I thought had some meaning. And if that's the case, we're trying to understand what's the difference between that and this? And maybe that's more of a Laura question, I'm not sure. And, and kind of how would I see the process? Because I've heard it could be, you know, as I've been trying to learn about this and, and researching this analysis. I've heard everything from a couple of days to nine months and budgets that are wildly different. So I'm just trying to get a sense of what this is and. I know there's a lot to be determined, but just trying to get a little bit more granular, granularity. So we want.
It continued to run that I've been in the planning mission now is trying to get to the next level of what is it? If there is little parameters around the use of threshold versus guidance samples, then we're claiming what that is. But we're the, uh, having on it, we have a push adoption plan to get into this in, in more detail in my perspective, Laura.
From my perspective, there's some benefit in transitioning the language from specifically thresholds of significance to this more general language, because we might get into it and learn that a threat, a formal threshold of significance is very meaningful and helpful. Or we might learn that we just need to adopt our own policies and best practices in some area. So I personally like that this is a little bit more general to give us the ability to find the solution that fits the best. And it may be a threshold of significance, or it may be something a little bit different.
Well, so that's super helpful. Thank you. Is it, is it possible, like, you, did you guys talk at all about what the, is this a nine month thing? Is it a, you know, has there been any more thinking about? Or is it hard to know? Like that could be a fact on you.
Yeah, so I can speak to our intent. I don't, you know, until we actually get to the details, I don't think we would know. I think we were looking at it as roughly 20 hours of, you know, outside, trying to gather.
That being said, with the process invented, so all consuming, and we don't want to, you don't want to be on the back. Where it was. Right, slide one. All right, supplemental safety measures for the house. Here we want to make sure that we're coordinating the areas, creating the work on safety related activities and. For animal evacuation, that'll work if you're having a coordinated effort with public healthcare crews. So the placement for the would be in the safety element and that's evolving. And that is an ongoing effort already. The housing element resides over this already in policy sticks. And we would recommend including this in the dependence of the M M. In terms of how it works, the staff and consultants would reach out to committees initially about the safety element process already to confirm that they were ready to assess and make recommendations in light of this upcoming increase in human population derived from the housing element. And in particular, ask them, you know, have. The process here would be within four to six months after the housing element adoption, have the staff work together. To conduct supplemental outreach to the various committees to confirm public services and infrastructure are going to continue to be available given the projected increase in town population. And at the appropriate service level, capacity and location, including a separate cost that would be appended to the increase in the. And necessary, I identified that was the maybe need to make. Utility, certain options, five or five minutes. Um, we have. Um, we had. We, we thought we should have to outreach that because we want to make sure we're understanding the quality and the, the, you know, class and what they are. And the comments, it was, it was, it was ready, you know, but this stuff is more comprehensive, technical to the staff. Certain, they don't know what it is. It's, it's going to be more, well, at more.
Um, I've been, I'm, so I guess I wanted to add this, I keep, so I thought it was important that at least the council might, well, but still they must just on staff didn't basically go out and offer these various services provided. Didn't basically go out and offer these, um, various services provided. Um, so when it took off, of course, I can be, you're probably now, but we thought it was important that there needs to be possible.
Um, through the mayor, we're hearing some concern about the ability for people to hear us. So if you could give us just a minute, I think, so that we can talk amongst ourselves and see if there's anything we can do there, we can have a little break just for a minute.
If you can hear me, we're going to stay with the reality. Well, if you can hear me, we'll take a 10 minute break. Staff is working with one of our suppliers to see if we can get the quality. If you can, I will suggest that you come down here because the sound here is fine. Um, so we're going to, we'll take 10 minutes, we'll come back at. Eight oh five and hopefully we'll have their money.
To. To give the public a summary of what happened at the beginning of the meeting.
Sure. Okay. Um, I will try if I forget something, somebody on the council. Okay, we came to order just after seven. The one report out of post-session was that the council has reached an agreement with Howard Young to be our interim town manager, uh, as opposed to his current position of acting town manager. So we will be finalizing a contract and presenting it at a future meeting. Uh, there were no, or there was one oral communication, you know, there were no. Um, the presentation by regarding the farmer's market update was not, did not happen. Our presenter was not present. The consent agenda was passed. Uh, we did pull and briefly discuss item five A, the warrant list and the other B, C, and D were, were passed on consent. And then we, um, we are on item seven. We, we decided during the meeting to reverse items six and seven so that we could talk about the colleagues memo on post-approval process before going through the, uh, public hearing on the ISM and D. So we are currently, we have gone through items one through five. We are currently on item seven, which is the presentation you're looking at right now. And we will be discussing item seven, taking public comment on it. Uh, the council will discuss it. And then we will move on to the public hearing on the ISM and D.
Sounds great.
Good summary.
Okay. Okay. So we are, again, we are on topic seven, colleagues memo. The presentation is showing topic five, which is the impact on, of the housing element on services and infrastructure, slide two. Um, Judith.
Sure. Uh, and Laura, just so the public knows, we're going to be circulating this or making it available after this meeting for us, just in case people want to catch up, they'll have access to the presentation.
Yes, it's currently on the website and has been since this afternoon, next to the council agenda packet. And we'll distribute it tomorrow through the town newsletter and our normal channels, but it is available online now.
Okay, so if folks want to be following along, we were on topic five, which is slides 12 and 13, and I, we were on slide 13, which is the second slide of topic five. This is the impact of the housing element on services and infrastructure, and I was pretty close to finishing up the description here. Uh, regarding, uh, the, the fact that we want to form a committee of committees uh, to include in particular the planning commission members and assess a more detailed and longer term qualitative and quantitative uh, implications of increasing the town population and housing units as a result of the housing element adoption. Uh, we want to understand and monitor issues, uh, identified and developments that may impact the availability also of insurance for new and existing housing units. The group or the committee's goal, uh, as however we can figure that, would be to advise the planning commission and the town council on mechanisms recommended to make sure that public services and infrastructure continue to be available uh, as appropriate for the town's population in terms of appropriate service level, quality, capacity and location, including an assessment of cost to the town. Uh, community outreach sessions would be conducted to allow the public to understand and comment on the committee's efforts and, and, uh, levels of services and infrastructure. The examples we have here are public utilities, public services, such as hospitals, fire protection services, police services, safety services and parks and recreation. Uh, comments, uh, the overview is that there will be an increased demand on services and infrastructure and that merits special monitoring and planning for increased demand while maintaining a level of services and resources. This would go beyond, uh, what the ISM and D is, is requiring uh, so that we're, uh, more routinely looking at these things and focusing on long-term implications. Uh, I can stop there and see if there's any context or questions. I think we've got.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, uh, topic six, uh, developing a policy for use of inclusionary funds. Uh, this is an ongoing effort, but again, we're trying to coalesce all of the efforts that impinge on the housing element information. So within six months after adoption of the housing element, we would define an inclusionary funds use policy to guide the town's use of funds arising from the housing element program. And here we want to be prepared when new development is proposed and people are looking for support, uh, for that and maybe fee waivers as we've seen recently, that we have a policy that's set up and ready to go when those requests come in. So the town council, it would go in the post-housing element plan. And the town council subcommittee, uh, already appointed, and I believe that's Mary and me, will work with the town committees to gather input on priorities and considerations that will form this type of policy. And with staff support, will develop a proposal for consideration by the town council for adoption. And this will complement the town's general efforts to identify incentives and support for expanding housing options as part of the housing element. Um, the town, um, is going to be assessing financial resources and the implications on the house, of the housing element, and this could also, uh, I then extend to the use of any other funds that become available uh, in terms of having a policy for how those revenues, um, and, and amounts held in the fund uh, are going to be allocated and available. Um. Topic seven, unless there's context questions on that.
Or a question.
Uh, topic seven is encouraging community and civic engagement. Uh, here we want to en- engage community organizations to discuss community housing needs and potential resource identification efforts. Post-housing element plan would be the place where we include this effort. And here in terms of process, we want to form a working group, including town committee and commission members to conduct outreach to civic organizations located or operating in town. Examples could be HOAs, medical support services, religious organizations, et cetera, who are positioned to understand the needs of the most vulnerable in the local community and assist in understanding existing impediments to developing housing for them, identifying and creating opportunities for housing generally and developing policies to support housing needs for these populations. This would not entail formal meetings unless the town council later found it necessary to conduct them, but the working group would report its findings to the town council. And overall, the comment here is that the intent of this activity is to engage organizations that have special insights into housing needs of vulnerable populations and engage them in defining town strategies to meet housing needs on an ongoing basis. Great. And any questions? If not, uh, the last item, topic eight, uh, is developing a housing element information repository. Here the action item is to create accessible, an accessible repository of housing element related information, including information about Rena requirements, uh, general and town specific analyses of available sites, processes, discussions and, uh, derived from the ad hoc housing element committee operations and other items. Uh, the placement would be in the post-housing element plan. And the process would be determined after the housing element adoption. This is going to require some knowledge of technical systems that we didn't have access to, but it would not entail material staff time unless the town council proves the work. It's really, the idea is to leverage the extensive work of the ad hoc committee and the staff uh, to prepare for those meetings and analyses and make it more accessible both to town committees and commissions and the town council who are trying to get oriented, for example, on, uh, what town-owned properties have already been analyzed uh, and making it a little more accessible. So we want to, you know, greatly recognize the immense efforts that have already gone on, uh, for the ad hoc committee and make sure that we, we don't lose the benefit of that effort as we try and look forward to post, post-adoption implementation. All right, that, those are the eight topics that we had, uh, as part of our post-adoption plan and our suggestions for, uh, having a process to give, give the planning conditions colleagues memo a way to impact our housing planning going forward. And I'll turn it back and see if there's any questions and see if Craig has any particular additional comments to make.
Craig, why don't you, if there's anything you want to add right now?
Um, I mean, before we start, the only thing I would add is before we start public comment is just to acknowledge that, you know, Judith and I worked really hard to get this out, but we also acknowledged that it got turned around in the period of like three days. Um, so for the public, this is a lot to sort of consume all at once. So I'd certainly welcome all your comments tonight. Um, I, you know, recommend that if you've got detailed comments that you write, you know, summarize them in written form and send them to us. And then the last thing I'd say is, you know, you should feel free to reach out to council members if you have, um, questions and comments that you'd like to get added. Because again, we're trying to do this in a very compressed timeframe and I apologize for that. But hopefully in this format, we've made it at least, at least a little bit more accessible.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other council questions before we get to public comment? Okay.
Oh, I'm not sure if this is a question. Yeah. The, uh, the topic three. Um, I noticed this issue from the planning issue as well. This wildfire safety assessment. There on that list, uh, under, uh, item two, uh, topic three is action. And I've been pushing for geologic to be added, geologic safety to be added to that list, like before wildfire. And, um.
And what, what's in four, topic four, where it says to address fire, geologic flooding and other risks?
Yeah, that's true. I was glad to see that. I didn't know what.
And where, and where were you looking for it?
Uh, this is topic three.
So in, in, for, for SEQA? Okay, so it's the SEQA piece.
Yeah, I do, I do appreciate the fact that. Then maybe that's all that we need to be.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
Okay, other council question?
My quick question, um, is, or maybe not quick, is, do you guys, I really appreciate the placement aspect of these tables. Um, and I guess my question is, do you, what is your vision for how this gets, um, documented? As part of today, you know, the next, this meeting and the last meeting, what's the vision for that?
Some of it is already documented. We've tried to cite where in the housing element that programs already contemplate part of the solution. Um, the MMRP, uh, we can discuss it when it comes around again, but we would have an addendum saying essentially we want to enhance what we're trying to do in terms of environmental, uh, view, viewing environment, environmental impacts of future development. Uh, so here is our Portola Valley, uh, local guidance. And in terms of the housing, the post-adoption plan, this is the outline and we would come back with more around the process. And I would think that, and I'm going to defer to Cara and Laura in terms of the really granular aspect, but conceptually, we would be looking for buy-in on whether these topics are appropriate to commit to implement, um, with details to follow within 30 days, uh, when it's identified for a post-housing element plan. Craig, how were you thinking about it?
Yeah, so I, I mean, the two parts are, there's the MMRP pieces and we need to, either this meeting or next meeting, I think we need to make some decisions and, and I think both Laura and Cara have some ideas on how we can put that in. Our goal there was clearly as enhancements to not, you know, this direct mitigation. Um, and then, yeah, the rest of it, I think between, hopefully tonight, if we can all leave with sort of, yeah, we all agree on this general direction, then I think the 30 days after we can, you know, we can get the fine details. But I just want to make sure for this that the gross details are in agreement, or if not, that we have that discussion and, and figure out what the sort of gross disagreements are.
Okay, that's perfect. I was wondering if you wanted something more formal than that, and I think that I'm happy with that.
But let, let's get to the discussion because I want to make sure we're on the same page.
I don't see any other questions from the council, so I will move on to public comment. Moment, I see two hands up on Zoom. If anyone in the room wants to speak, you can raise your hand. Uh, we'll start with Rita. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I've been online since, um, 7:00 PM, right before 7:00 PM. And it's really unfortunate, uh, this presentation looked absolutely beautiful. And I would love to have heard, uh, Judith and Craig's comments during the presentation, but unable not heard any, uh, just little bits because of the sound quality. And we seem to have had this problem since early January, which is, makes it very frustrating. And we have the hybrid and, and I know, um, uh, mayor had suggested that, um, the sound quality was good at the council chambers, but it's not convenient for people when they're, um, you know, they might have to hire a babysitter or do something different in order to get there when they're relying on, on this technology that we've been having this problem since January with, and which is the reason why I uh, participated in the 6:00 PM meeting suggesting that, you know, it got checked for the 7:00 PM meeting because so many of the residents, this is such an important topic and, um, the residents that are on, I think there was over 27 in the beginning. Um, you know, I'm not sure how many are on now, but, uh, a lot of people were, were going off the meeting. I, I'm really happy to see these particular items, uh, you know, address the costs, uh, the voices of the residents, not just of the time of the committee members and, and the staff. And I, I really hope that, um, you know, the public really wants to be part of this. And, you know, let us, let us have a chance and, you know, make things available. If we have a hybrid meeting, please check the technology. We have contracts. You serve strips. We'll help you. You know, um, we're, we're, we're here to help. So thank you for doing this. We've missed most of the meeting. I really hope that there's no big decisions that are happening tonight because, um, we've missed out on it. We've missed out on it. And I'm disappointed in, in, in the system, not in any one individual, but it's, it's made it really hard for the residents. And I see that there's 26 attendees. There would have been more. There's been a lot of talk of the town. This is an important meeting for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Uh, Dale Fow is his hand. Dale, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for your time and thank you, uh, Craig and Judith for putting this together. Uh, I'm going to go back to one of my favorite topics and that's the safety element. As you know, I've always felt the safety element ought to drive the housing element and not vice versa. And the, the draft safety element that was promulgated, uh, was an awful document, to be quite honest. It, it dramatically understated our fire risk, our seismic risk, our evacuation risk, uh, ignored, almost completely ignored the Moritz map. And, uh, that's been put on, you know, sort of the slow phase here until the housing element is, is completed. But at some point, the safety element needs to be done. It needs to be done correctly. And then it needs to be harmonized with the safety element. It, and, and again, or with the housing element. And again, I ask you, do not. And again, I ask you, do not let the housing element drive the safety element. So I see some oblique references in these items to the safety element, like adding to it and making sure that we see it. But I don't see a specific item talking about, let's complete the safety element, let's do it correctly, and then let's harmonize it, harmonize the housing element with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. If you're not seeing other hands up on Zoom right now, Rusty Days has stood up in the audience. Go ahead, Rusty.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you very much. That reflects an awful lot of work and commitment on the part of the subcommittee. It's not to put aside the work that every other committee's done here, but thank you for taking on the, thank you for taking on the responsibility and initiative to drive this process. We all owe you a great debt for doing that.
We'll get you heard. We'll get you heard.
Well, I guess the first words were, I said, wow, because this reflects an awful lot of work and much needed work. Thoughtful planning and preparation and thinking forward, anticipating what we're going to need to do and planning to deal with it. Thank you. So Judith and Craig, kudos to both of you. But also thank you to Nicholas Tark and Linda Brothers for initiating this in the planning commission. It's that kind of energy and creative thinking that I think we really need to bring to bear. I have two comments that I'd like to make as suggestions with respect to the topics. First of all, with respect to the zoning, that is also a safety issue. And I don't see any description of the inclusion of the fire district in the zoning decision-making process. The fire district has commented on the ISMMD and pointed out the significance of zoning impacts on fire hazard and safety in town. Its expertise needs to be included and brought into the zoning decisions. And that should be worked into this process. Ditto with respect to the safety element. I don't see, I completely agree with Dale's comments, but I want to add that I don't see an elaboration or articulation of the role of the fire district. And going beyond the fire district, what other complementary resources are available to us regionally or through the county to assist us grapple with our safety needs? The fire district has a lot of competency and expertise. How are we going to bring that to bear and bring that into focus? Also, what process are we going to use to revise the safety element? How are we going to turn that into an inclusionary process? I'm glad we're going to finally deal with the inclusionary funds. How are we going to deal with the citizen inclusion in the delineation of our policy? And make effective use of the citizens we have in this town to elaborate our safety element? That's where we need some really strong leadership and thinking from this council. But I commend you and I thank you. I've got comments that go beyond what you've proposed that relate to the ISMMD. And I'll save most of those comments when the ISMMD comes up later. But the point I want to make is we have a problem. And this work that you're doing goes part of the way to solving the problem, but it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is that we have an ISMMD that superficially and inadequately assesses the environmental impact of the changes we're making on our town. What are we going to do about that? Well, coming up with post approval processes to address that, that's helpful. But it doesn't solve the problem. The fire district has written the town two months ago elaborating what the severe adverse significant effects of the policy changes that are being proposed will be. And it's also identified what mitigation steps need to be taken to address those adverse effects. The ISMMD should be modified to incorporate the fire district's recommendations and their mitigations. And I'll go into more detail later. I don't want to take time now to do that. But I want you, the fire district has already done the heavy lifting for you. All you have to do is take advantage of what it's done and revise the ISMMD. And you will have dealt with the deficiencies of that document insofar as its assessment of wildfire hazard and risk in our community. I will come back when we talk about the ISMMD to explain why that, I think, is the appropriate approach to take. Thank you.
I see Linda Brothers' hand up. Linda, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Linda Brothers. I'm speaking as a citizen, although I'm on the planning commission. I am commenting on what I've heard here tonight. And I've been trying to find the memo online and I can't find it. So it's literally what I, what notes I made as I, as I listened. First of all, I agree you are to be commended for taking the work of the planning commission and pulling it together in a different fashion and putting in some dates. I feel like you ought to incorporate some form of a table of contents perhaps in the ISMMD and the MMRP. It's clear under section 15 of 73.5b2 that this can be done and it absolutely does not trigger any form of recirculation of the SEQA document. But that is a, the MMRP is a known document and it's a document that has an integrity on its own already. And so I think at least a table of contents of your various topics put in there. So that's kind of a place where people can go to figure out where and how we're dealing with each particular topic would be a good way to go. And it would definitely strengthen the ISMMD. And on that point, finally, the housing element will, in rough terms, increase the population of our town by 20%. So I think it's really important to put that in that document because that's the assessment, at least at this point, of what those impacts are going to be. Secondly, I couldn't hear and/or see all of the dates for implementation, but I made one note on your topic five, where you, I think, are out 18 months. I'm concerned about getting in a situation where we'll start getting proposals for developments. And there may be impacts that will be cumulative. We'll get one and then we'll get another and then we'll get another. And if there's something that we're going to be needing developers or proposers to pay into a fund, make new courts somewhere, new parks, whatever, I want to make sure that we get that done as quickly as possible, at least as a draft level, so that we don't get into a pipeline and then realize that we haven't started early enough to begin to ameliorate impacts. I use the word ameliorate to avoid using mitigation and avoid using the SEQA language. So I think I'll stop at that point, but you did a nice job and I appreciate all the effort that went into it.
So through the mayor?
Please.
Can I make just one comment? If you go to the town calendar and go to the town council meeting for tonight at 7:00 o'clock and click on that, you'll get to a page and it's got three agenda slots on it. And the third one is the subcommittee presentation.
Thanks, Craig. I see no other hands up on Zoom. Anyone else in the room have a comment on the post adoption process? Now I'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
Hello, I love the topic. I guess I, one thing that I'm a little vague on is the placement of topics three and four yesterday is on the MMRP. That is the ISMMD. They actually are changing the ISMMD with the, so I mean, how to run this together front. It's not just post. Not just a post, back to standard.
Staff, is that, is that correct? The MMRP is something here, if you would revise, separate from ISMMD, correct?
They normally go together as a package. And so there's normally one resolution that adopts the ISMMD and the MMRP. That's the customary practice.
So thank you. This is great work and I really appreciate all the detail in here. And in particular, I think it's really helpful to understand more about your first pass of what the process is going to be and the documents that there's kind of shared understanding about where it is. I think last week we were really kind of circling around on that. So that's super helpful and much more clear. So thank you very much. The one, I had one comment that's kind of a question and it's related to part one of the housing inventory. I'm wondering if part of that process, we had talked before, and maybe this is just my personal interest, in having an affordable housing developer study session where we can kind of learn about best practices around affordable housing development. And to me, having this kind of at the start within that first three months would be important. And so was wondering if that was something you guys would be open to considering adding as part of the work there. It's already in the roll forward, so it's really not new, but just wanted to flag that. It's a learning session, exclusive.
I'll make a couple just to start. So, okay, since we are talking about modifying the MMRP, what, so on topic three, for example, when you talk about the SEQA guidelines and local guidance, are you saying that you'd want to put that, you want to modify the MMRP just to reflect that we're having this process? And what would go in the MMRP?
And you're looking at the topic three? So I think it's to be discussed in terms of recommended legal approaches. But the idea would be to say furthermore, we want to enhance the MMRP measures to include the following efforts and then describe action item two.
And the same with the topic four, the same thing.
Yeah, I'm certainly not a SEQA expert, but yes, the idea would be to recite in an addendum to the MMRP that this enhanced measure would be taken.
One comment, which was when you talk about topic five, its impact on services and infrastructure, so it's six of the hundred. I would just, I mean, you know, our tip, our, our, we have franchise agreements with some of the utility providers. We should integrate that with, we should probably revisit this. That's a longer process.
You could put it in the discussion.
Yeah, sorry. I was just saying that we have franchise agreements with our large utility providers that, and that the franchise agreement should be part of topic five, which is the impact on. Other than that, yeah, I think this is, this is great. It's, it's sort of spells out a lot of what we were talking about with the post process. Obviously, this is the finished plan, but I'm fully supportive of fleshing this out a bit. Comments or questions? I guess, is there other?
I have one. Inappropriate. And I admit it, but there are seven people on the panel that I don't know. Maybe I should know who they are, but.
We have panelists that are for the upcoming item on the MMD. So these are our technical experts.
Yeah, well, they do introduce at the beginning of the, because it's just.
Yeah, so this is more common in planning commission or ASCC, but we bring forward people that may need to answer questions for the council and we make them panelists so that they can answer.
So if they could be introduced, then I would feel like I was using my resources.
Comments on the?
This, this one's a net, and I thought of it as Jeff was talking also on the services and infrastructure. Obviously, we talked about that as part of our council priorities. And really, I see a lot of these challenges as overarching, not just unique to the housing element. And so I'm, you know, I just think we should flag that, but it's also within council priorities versus as narrow as housing element. Not that that's narrow by any means, but you guys know what I mean.
Yeah, we were definitely focusing on what's the difference to do with the housing element. I don't, we're not intending to limit the general priority at all, so we can.
So I just got a comment on a comment. So Sarah, on the getting a housing developer meeting here, can we do that within the first nine months? That seemed like that would line up with when you're creating the larger community, the larger committee. So it's not at nine months, but it's sometime within nine months.
So I was flagging this authority in the roll forward for this spring. So, and it's not a housing developer. It's what's, it's a study session to learn about. We talked about this in a couple council meetings ago. The idea is just to learn about affordable housing development best practices. And I think that's an important tool to get everybody informed about what that is as you think about what the options are going to be in the post approval process.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just trying to figure out in terms of timing and staff time, where we fit it in, so.
I mean, it's already on the roll forward.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, no, I was just, so in here, what we were trying to do in all of these is put a range so that, and particularly for staff, that we had some flexibility because we've got to operationalize a bunch of the housing element stuff as soon as we get it approved. So I just want to make sure we have enough flexibility that we don't somehow say, oh, and now we have to do this thing and it takes staff time to get prepared. So I just don't know what's involved. It just felt to me like up to the time where we have the committee, the larger committee, it seemed like we definitely need to get it done before that gets constituted. But I mean, yeah, if it gets done in three or four months, I don't have a problem with that. That's, it was just more, I was just trying to think about, you know, if I were to put something in here, we generally try to give it some, as much runway, and then it could happen anytime sooner because these are all up to. So some of these things that say nine months, if they happened in six months, it would be fine. So anyway, it, I just wasn't sure what you wanted specifically added. I mean, do you want us to just?
I'm not asking for anything necessarily to be added. I was just flagging that. I think that's important. That's helpful information as part of kind of, I see your part one, your first three months as scoping, pre-planning, all of that kind of stuff you're going to be doing there. And I think that dovetails nicely with this kind of educational session. That's already on the roll forward. So I was just highlighting that it would be no extra work for you guys or anything like that, just a component of informing the baseline.
And you were, you were, you were suggesting we take action this next week.
Well, what I, I think what we'd like to see tonight is if we're generally aligned with the topics, then the real question is MMRP because that's going to impact the ISMMD. So if we're aligned that our suggestion to putting in the MMRP is okay, then I think what I would expect is that from Laura and Cara, we would ask them to say, you know, suggest the best way to incorporate that into the MMRP.
There's also a question on what level of commitment. There, there's also a question on what level of commitment to lock on the topics to be set out in the post-housing adoption element, post-adoption housing element plan. And a question for Cara and Laura about how we substantiate that for purposes of any housing element approval or ISM and D approval. So this is an outline and it's intended to be topics that if we can get that consensus about, we commit to as opposed to, yes, we agree that's going to happen in three to six months. So there's a, there's a balance there that given our tight timeline is worth looking at and discussing, because I think these are really important points to make sure that if we're going to do these things, I look at the ISM and D and the housing element in one way. If it's really a, we'll get to that thing later, we're not committing, I'd, I'd want to know that. So I really do want to make sure we know where the, the council is on these topics. Whether, whether tonight or next week, this is a lot to absorb all at once. I'm not looking for that right, right at this moment after you think about it and give feedback.
Laura, Cara, did you want the, the MMRP question? Did you want to comment on these, specifically on the items in here that would go in the MMRP?
Um, Cara, do you want to start?
Sure. So we, we have reviewed the MMRP suggestions and recommendations. And we originally had some reservations about reopening the ISM and D and adding additional measures. However, I think both the planning commission's analysis of these measures as well as the updated subcommittee's recommendations with respect to the inclusion of certain features into the MMRP have given us comfort that it would be appropriate to include the, the limited measures in the MMRP, provided there's a separate category that is, that distinguishes these measures from the more traditional SEQA mitigation measures. So we would suggest something, just, you know, an, an addendum or just a, a, really just a separate page in the MMRP with a subheading that says something like additional policies per and not SEQA mitigation measures, closed per and. So really, it's just making sure that the intent, as expressed by the planning commission and the, the council subcommittee to distinguish these from the SEQA mitigation measures is expressed in the MMRP itself. And with that, you know, I, I don't have reservations about including those measures. Also, with respect to the other measures, there are six additional measures that, as I understand, are not being proposed as part of the MMRP. One way to approach those would be to have a motion either tonight or the 29th that directs the subcommittee to work with staff to incorporate those measures into a post-adoption plan. And we would anticipate that there would be some additional flushing out of those six measures and, you know, maybe some, some more description. And then those could come back in a 30-day period or so as a formal resolution with an attachment that includes the more detailed discussion of those six points. So that would be one option for the council to consider. But I think that it would be important to have a vote on a motion in connection with, you know, the housing element on the 29th that does give staff at least direction on how to proceed with those remaining six items so that they are not lost in the process.
No.
Okay. So this just, this is, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process here. So we actually would be amending the MMRP between now and next week, is that?
Yes, if that was the council's direction, that we would propose the language for this extra page, what we're calling it, with these items based on what's in this plan and then review that legally, what we think is the best way to approach.
Okay. So if we did that, we would, I mean, we would not be able to vote on the ISM and D. That, that, did we still, did we still approve guys?
I believe that you could approve the ISM and D with specific direction to follow up in a certain way or to appoint one or two council members to work with staff to finalize the resolution.
And then the MMRP could come back next week with those modifications?
You could do it either way. If you wish to adopt the ISM and D tonight, we believe you could and we could talk you through the method of doing that. Or we could prepare those materials for next week.
Okay, I will. I know I'm talking a lot of terms, but, um, okay, I just want to make sure, just in terms of getting final, getting to consensus on this. So I just want to make sure.
Can I ask to clarify a question on that? So again, this is all about the process. So if we're looking at everything on here, other than topic three and four, which are MND, MMRP related, is, just to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, Cara, essentially what you're saying is that the best way to kind of document that, so to speak, is through a motion with the housing element? Or would it be helpful to do that tonight? And the reason I ask is just I'm interested in trying to accomplish as much as we can tonight, given that, you know, next week is our last meeting.
I think it's appropriate to do it either tonight through a motion or on the 29th through a motion. Either way would work. And then, of course, there would be a subsequent follow-up resolution that further flushes out the, the additional measures.
Yeah, what I, what I heard from Cara was that the possibility of doing a motion tonight that would direct a subcommittee to work on items, which are basically two, one, two, five, six, seven, and eight, and come back to us with a resolution. Once they, my assumption is go through that three-month process that has it fully fleshed out. And then we would vote on the resolution. Is that accurate? Thirty days? Okay.
So, so basically just a, a motion, we could take it tonight, which would formalize, sort of formalize that, that physical process.
Thirty days after the housing element approval, I'm assuming?
What discussion do you want to have and when do you want to have it on the overall process? Because I'm, I'm personally not able to comment on the process until we have the full presentation. But if you want to get into discussing what else now, we can. I just don't know when the right time to have that discussion is. We still have a presentation.
Okay, so you'd rather do the ISM and D before? That's fine.
Sorry, I don't, you know, I don't know what you're saying.
What Cara is suggesting and what Sarah is suggesting is six of them are, are not MMRP items. We would actually be, I think, I mean, I would actually be comfortable sort of saying, yes, let's get started on those six items. Because they don't belong in MMRP. And Cara, I'm not getting this wrong. I'd be comfortable starting on those six items.
Making a motion, setting a timeline for them.
So the question I actually have for Cara is, is there a way to? Because I think the legal effect of saying, yes, get started on it, is we approve the ISM and D now and maybe the housing element without the assurance that there's a commitment to this. All that I'm hearing that is, is yes, you can work on this. And what I would be wanting assurance on is that we are all buying into needing to do this. And I don't know legally what you need, if that's possible, to get that type of assurance. Because I'm not looking for permission to do more work. I've been doing plenty this week. What I'm looking for is these are integral pieces for me of getting comfortable with the next few weeks' topics. And, and that's what I'm a bit confused about. And I was going to wait until the next presentation and see if it became clearer what we were trying to do. But if now's the right moment, I'm happy to raise that weight. Cara, I don't know if that, that was clear.
That makes total sense, yes. So, um, that's why I, I did suggest a, a motion. And I think that it is important to get buy-in from the entire council and a decision, sort of a commitment to adopt the, the six or, or fewer, whatever the motion is, design features with the caveat that we are going to want to create a more detailed plan at a later time. And so the conundrum we're in is, do we, do we just pause everything in order to create a more detailed plan? Which we can do, we can certainly do that. Or do we want to take it in a bifurcated approach, kind of a staged approach, where the council as a whole does show the public that, that they are committed to phase one, which is incorporation of these broad principles. And then you would take a follow-up action as phase two, which would be the actual adoption and codification of the plan itself. And in, in the past, when council has taken a staged approach like that, it's unusual that council members change their minds. It's, it's, you know, legally, of course, you can do that. But, you know, I think that if there's an agreement among yourselves that this is the direction you want to head towards, I think in this situation, a staged approach would be fine.
Okay, thank you. That, that was very helpful. Certainly, we're not trying to, we, we said there would be a 30-day period where this gets fleshed out. So to me, that was contemplated. I just, the, the motion was an important part for me. So thank you for clarifying that. And then in terms of the MMRP, I, I personally, and it's open for discussion, there's, there's five of us, would want the MMRP language, the addendum, to be available and to be adopted at the time. But a fulsome discussion so we know where we are makes sense to me. But that, I don't know what other people think. I'd like to hear my fellow council members on that.
So, yeah, so I, I can comment. So I certainly agree with Judas. I mean, if, if we said we, we adopt the six topics as, as a motion and that all we're doing is, is asking staff to further flesh them out, I'm comfortable with that. That seemed a little different than what Cara said at first, which is we would just adopt a resolution to direct staff to go work on this. So to me, it's important that we, as a council, adopt the topics, right? And that there's substantial agreement on these topics and that the 30 days is just to work out details, not to change them or in 30 days do, do an up or down on whether we think they were a good idea. Like, the resolution I expect is that we've already agreed that these are the right topics and the right, you know, information is here. All we're looking for is additional detail. So if we can craft a, a motion tonight along those lines, that I'm comfortable moving that piece of it forward. And then the ISM and D, I guess I kind of agree. It does sort of feel like we just ought to have it all at the same time. It's, I, I know we're kind of trying to move step forward, but I don't know. It seems like bifurcating the MMRP from the ISM and D feels a little bit awkward. I, I guess I don't have a strong opinion, but.
Let's come back to the ISM and D. But in terms of this plan, most of, you want to, you want to try to put the motion together right now?
I'm sorry, through the mayor? I just want to set expectations from something that I just heard. I think I was under the impression that the council subcommittee was going to flesh out the plan in the next 30 days. And I think Commissioner Taylor just said that staff is going to.
And that's actually what I heard Cara say. So I was actually just mimicking Cara. I, I mean, I'm happy to continue to work on this. I think it's going to involve some staff time, you know, like we did in this last four days, Laura, where we met to make sure that the details that we're crafting are things that, you know, staff can look at and say, yeah, this, this is stuff we can work on. So, but I'm not expecting staff to generate the initial details, if, if that's the concern you had.
Okay, and then the other part, and sorry to have to do this, I'll be on vacation two of the next 30, two weeks out of the next 30 days. We'll, we'll work with it. Yeah, so we just, I just want everyone to be aware of that. Thank you, though.
So can we craft a motion?
I don't know. I mean, I, those, those six measures. Obviously, we have to have fleshed the plan. Why don't you guys put together a motion?
You want to give it a shot or?
Well, I'm not terribly good at this. Motion to adopt the approach set forth in the subcommittee's, what are we calling this? Preliminary post-adoption implementation plan and related recommendations with the caveat that those items expressly set out to be in the MMRP are to be dealt with when we're talking about the, they're, they're not included in this motion, that they would be subject to the ISM and D discussion and a separate consideration there. And so the motion would be to adopt the other six topics, commit conceptually that this is the direction the council will go and commits to going in and with more detail to be fleshed out by the subcommittee with supportive staff over the next 30 days. Way long, you tell me if it works.
Yeah, and you only slight him in my, he's 30 days after the housing element is approved, rather than 30 days from tonight.
Accepted.
It is items, it's topics one, two, five, six, seven, and eight.
Those are going to be separate.
One, two, five, six, seven, and eight.
And so for clarity, I thought the motion was expressing support for all of the items and that directing two would go into the MMRP and then the other ones would be developed. Is that, that's better. I, I think that that's, I think that that's stronger.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. And then the subcommittee doing work within 30 days after post-approval period, 30 days in order to flesh out items other than topic three and four.
Okay, I, I believe we've got it. I can work with Cory on the language because I understand what you're looking for. So I think we've got that.
I'm happy to stay so moved with Laura's amendment.
Did you make the motion?
No, I was looking for a second, so all yours.
Did you make a motion? I think you made a motion. You were, I think you were trying to make a motion, yeah. So then, yeah, and then, as amended, and then Sarah, do you want a second? Great, there we go.
And Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify? Could I just clarify that the measures that are to be included in the MMRP would be added as additional policies and not as SEQA mitigation measures?
Well, I, we need to talk about the exact language, right? What you described in what you envisioned, the additional page where you're saying they're not SEQA required mitigation measures, but they are additional policies.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that concept is what we were intending. I don't know the legal language is accurate here, so I defer to you on that. But if that's what you were talking about, that's consistent with what I was envisioning.
Thank you.
Need more discussion on the?
That was a little bit of a, I thought that was a little bit of a, so we're not including this in the, in law.
We're adopting all eight topics. Two of them are going to be embodied in an addendum to the MMRP. Two of them are going to be embodied in an addendum, the MMRP. Add additional policy.
As long as we still got that, I'm.
Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion. Uh, roll call this.
Councilmember Haskell. Hi. Councilmember Hufte.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warnikoff.
Aye.
Mayor Alves.
Aye. Thank you.
Back to item six. Want to break or? Back to back to item six, which is the ISM and D. Laura, are you starting?
I will. Give me just a second.
Can I get the uh, people on the panel?
We will, we will.
Okay.
I have a ladybug on my hand that I'm trying not to wipe off while I'm doing this.
Can I take it outside?
Because this is, this is how we do things here. It curled right. I was watching it and then it curled right up on me.
Wait, welcome to the blue nation.
That's good luck, right? Sure, you wanna, you wanna give it safekeeping while I'm getting my presentation? I don't want him to be damaged in the ISM and D presentation. Yeah, wherever you think he's safe, she. Wherever they are safe. Okay, I think we're ready. Um, if anyone does not know me yet, I'm Laura Russell, I'm the Planning and Building Director. Um, we are joined tonight um, by a big team. So as always, um, Cara Silver is here, the town attorney. Um, Adrian Smith, our senior planner, is here in the room. And then some of the consultants that are with us um, this evening. These are the technical folks that are kind of behind the scenes. Um, John Wallace, many of you know, he's our um, town geologist from Cotton Shires. We have Curtis Banks from Urban Planning Partners. That's the lead um, on our environmental review process. We've got sorry, people are bouncing around on me. Um, we have James Martin from um, one of the environmental groups that did some of the individual studies. We have um, and then we have um, Bob Grandy from Fair and Peers. He's the one that did the evacuation analysis. We have Sam Adabek from Baseline Environmental. We have Charlie Coles from Fair and Peers. Um, they did the VMT analysis for us. And then we have our um, outside sequel counsel, Rick Jarvis, that you've met before. And I believe that's it. Okay, so we have um, presented these materials in a form that you would have the option of adopting the ISM and D. So you do have a resolution before you. Um, my presentation is going to be um, fairly um, high level. And then if you have specific questions for our technical consultants, um, it is a great time to ask those questions. So we're gonna discuss the ISM and D, that's initial study mitigated negative declaration, and have a chance to have questions. And then if the council wishes, you can consider adopting a resolution, adopting those items. And a reminder to everybody online, there's a process FAQ and a table of meetings. We are now at thirty nine meetings and about a hundred and thirty three hours of public um, discussion on this general housing element update topic. So I said a little bit about who some of the people are that are here um, in terms of the categories. Um, this is the types of analysis that each of them do. So Fair and Peers is a leading transportation firm. They did the VMT, that's vehicle miles traveled analysis. And a different group of the, on their team, did the evacuation analysis. This is the same evacuation analysis that we've been referring to as the evacuation study. And then they did an addendum to that to include the housing element sites. All of that information is available on the town's website. Then Baseline Environmental Consulting did analysis related to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality and noise. And then Environmental Collaborative did the biological resource analysis. Cogstone Resource Management did the cultural and tribal cultural resources analysis. And Deer Creek Resources did the wildfire hazard analysis. So this is a reminder of the recent timeline. In October of twenty twenty two, the town released the draft of the ISM and D at the very end of the month for the thirty day public review period. And then the planning commission held a series of meetings. The first one was on November sixteen. And that included the discussion of the ISM and D and public comments were received. Then the planning commission further discussed on January twenty fourth about the response to comments memo. And on February fifteenth, adopted a resolution recommending town council approval of the ISM and D. And you're familiar with the other items that they recommended at that time. And then um, we include the town council study session from last week. Um, there wasn't much conversation about this, but there was about related topic. So generally related to the Sequa purpose, I think it's always important to start at the beginning with Sequa. This is the California Environmental Quality Act. It goes back to right about nineteen seventy, um, in kind of the modern environmental movement. The purpose of Sequa is to inform. That's the most important thing. We're trying to inform government decision makers and the public about the potential environmental impacts of the proposed activities. And where we can, we want to prevent significant avoidable environmental damage. Sequa does not dictate any particular outcome. Um, you can approve or deny projects regardless of what the sequel findings um, come to. But there's specific ways that you have to do that. So this is not a recommendation for either approval or denial of any kind of project. So it's required for any kind of project that's seeking a discretionary approval. And this term project under Sequa is a little bit tricky, and I'm gonna talk about it more. Um, always remember, there's a lot of terms of art when we're dealing with Sequa. So we're looking at any discretionary action that a decision making body is taking that could cause a direct physical change or a reasonably foreseeable indirect change in the environment. And in this case, all those words are meaningful. And then we want to identify um, and mitigate impacts if that's feasible. So Sequa implementation um, has become very complex since it originated in the early seventies. And the way that it's implemented today is truly puzzle pieces. Um, we are guided by the state law itself. And then by the sequel guidelines that are published by the state office of planning and research, that's OPR. That's the same folks that um, put out a lot of guidance for different planning topics in the state. It's also guided very much by court decisions and case law. As well as the regulations and guidelines by other state and regional agencies. So for example, the Air District um, has um, regulations that they put in place and standards and and expectations. Then we also apply the town's policies as well as the best practices within those different expertise. So here's a little few key concepts to make sure that we're all using the same terminology and and kind of understand the basics. Um, we talk about two different levels of analysis with Sequa. One is a program or a plan level analysis, and a different level is the project level analysis. And so the pro programmer plan level is very broad policy basis. And this ISM and D is an example of that kind of analysis. It covers the whole plan. But it does not examine the very site specific things that we may see come forward in the future from the individual projects. And that's because those projects haven't been proposed yet, and so we don't know what the specifics are. So it is by design um, a higher level environmental document. This can be contrasted to a project level. So this is where there's a specific proposal for development. And that analysis includes much more detail about what's planned, how it would be constructed, and how it would operate. So um, our most um, important example is the Stanford Wedge EIR. That is a project level analysis that's highly specific to that exact project. And so the question has been asked many times, what happens with future development projects that are proposed under this housing element? And when individual projects come up, they would each have to be evaluated um, for the appropriate level of sequel review, and that would be based on specifically what is proposed. So for example, um, that a lot of people are very interested in, the Ford Park and Open Space Affordable Housing Site would require its own project level sequel analysis, and that would likely be an EIR, an environmental impact report. And I also want to point out, because there's been a lot of questions, this ISM and M and D does not change anything about the Stanford Wedge EIR project. It doesn't facilitate it. It doesn't, it's no plus or minus. It's completely neutral related to the Stanford Wedge EIR. That's on its own track with its own process. And this is a midpoint reminder to say, we know that these words don't make a lot of sense. Um, so many terms of art, it's real challenge here. Um, and so what's a a mitigated negative declaration versus an environmental impact report? So the process that we go through is the town is the lead agency that has meaning in the law. We prepare the initial study, and there there's a list that I'll show you of the topic areas. And we determine whether the project may have a significant adverse effect. And significant, again, has meaning here. If there's no adverse effects, um, or if any potential effects could be mitigated to less than significant level, then a mitigated negative declaration can be adopted. So if you kind of break that down, mitigated, meaning literally there are mitigation measures that have to be applied. And then negative declaration, that actually is kind of what it sounds like. We can make a statement that says that with mitigation, there's not going to be the significant effects on the environment. So if the mitigation measures can reduce those potential effects to a less than significant level, then we stick with that M and D. If not, then we have to go up um, to an EIR level document. So a little bit more about what does significant mean under Sequa. Um, don't um, fall into the trap of using the everyday definition of significant. Um, significant really does have um, a specific meaning here. So it's not the common usage of the word. It's not like logic or, you know, um, kind of your impression of something. We have a process that we go through when we're doing sequel analysis. And so we um, decide on the source of the criteria for each topic. And we define the threshold for each topic. So these are the things that can come from multiple places. They can come from other agencies um, that are regulators to us. They can come from our own policies. They can come from best practice. There's multiple ways that these, this criteria and these thresholds come together. Then we analyze the different areas, the different topic areas, and see if there's a potential impact. We compare the outcome to that established criteria. To see um, against that criteria, against that threshold, do we see a significant impact? So as um, in sequel world, a significant impact is defined as a substantial or potentially substantial adverse change in the environment. And this has been substantiated over many years, primarily through case law. So sequel practitioners are familiar with what we consider to be um, significant impacts based on all of that experience and all of those court cases that have happened. It needs to be based on scientific or factual data. Um, some of the things are more qualitative and some of them are more quantitative. That is an accepted part of sequel practice. And we are measuring against existing physical environmental conditions. And so that's called the baseline. And that's another term of art in the sequel world. So now talking a little bit about the scope of this particular ISM and D and what was analyzed as part of it. So the first thing, of course, is the housing element update itself. So we are considering the housing element as a whole. So we're thinking about the whole plan and everything it encompasses. Um, so the draft housing element, um, that's before you today, all of that is covered, um, and has been part of this. Then we've included as well the safety element. And this includes um, the main parts of the safety element. So we've got compliance with state law, and we've got the policies to minimize the negative impacts and risks of natural and human made hazards. So this is the list of things, fires, floods, droughts, earthquakes, landslides, and climate change that's covered. Um, many people have asked me, how can we do the environmental review of the safety element if it's only in its first draft form? And um, we still have an opportunity to make changes to the safety element. Approving the ISM and D does not mean that the safety element would have to stay stagnant or could not be revised. We think based on the way sequel analysis is um, conducted, that we will have adequate coverage for our safety element, even if it changes um, and becomes enhanced through our committee process. If for some reason there is a significant change to the safety element that triggers review under Sequa, then we can go back and do an addendum to the ISM and D to cover any changes to the safety element. But we have considered this, and we feel like from a technical point of view, we are well positioned um, in including the safety element in this analysis. It also includes the general plan amendments that are needed to conform um, the housing element to the remainder of the general plan. And you'll recall that we limited the general plan amendments to be those things that are only really absolutely necessary um, for adoption of the housing element. So we took um, a very, very light touch approach, given the importance of the general plan to the community. So we're required to outline the things that are changing in the general plan, and this is that outline. So you're familiar with this list, but we're creating a new gateway land use classification. We're creating new multifamily um, land use classifications, new zones, so to speak. Um, creating the opt-in um, program and revising the general plan map. This also includes the zoning amendments. Um, and the zoning amendments are specified in sufficient detail in the ISM and D um, to be analyzed at this um, program plan level. And um, as you, I'm sure, all know, it in in um, includes creating three new zoning districts, codifying the affiliated housing program in the municipal code itself. And then revising the zoning map with those new districts. So all of these things together, you can think of this, that's all of that is the scope of what the ISM and D covers. These are the topic areas that were evaluated in the ISM and D. These are all of the topic areas that are covered in the Sequa guidelines. And so these are the standard topics, um, and in the standard order that Sequa usually covers these types of things. Depending on the scope of the analysis, sometimes only some topics are analyzed. And then sometimes all of the topics are analyzed. So if you're looking at different sequel documents, you will see some variety of whether all the topics are covered. Um, so this is new for some people. It kind of gives you a sense of the range of things um, that we're considering here. And it's also important to to point out always um, that Sequa covers specific things. And certainly in every environmental document I've been involved in in my career, there are other topics that are of interest to the town that may not be covered in the sequel document. And so I think our town process of the colleagues memo coming from the planning commission, and then the council subcommittee has really um, put a bright light onto that, that the town has really learned a lot through the ISM and D process. And um, found even additional things that are worth further consideration. I also wanted to point out kind of the strength of our existing general plan and other policies around environmental protection. And in um, planner language, we sometimes call this self mitigating. And the basic concept is that we, the town, already have And the basic concept is that we, the town, already have a lot of environmental protections that are in place. And there are also many policies that are already in place by our regional and state requirements that apply to this type of work. And so because of that, there were not as many potential issues found in the IS M N D analysis. So an example would be here, we have very strong geotechnical mapping and a review process for projects because of our soil conditions and our faults. And if this process didn't already exist, then there would be much more mitigation required in those topic areas. So you can think about it that since our general plan and our existing policies have so many good things already in place, then the IS M N D basically finds less problems because many of those problems have already been addressed by policies that we have in place. So this principle is kind of going on in the background. If you look at the IS M N D and you say, hmm, there's not very much there, we didn't find very many problems, it's because we already have a lot of big things in place. And so this is like the conclusion that there's a relatively small number of housing units in this IS M N D. Now, this is by Sequoia standards, not to say that it's small for the town, but compared to what Sequoia will often analyze, this is relatively small number of housing units. And so that's one of the reasons we can come to this conclusion that all of this housing element and associated work would not have a significant impact as defined in Sequoia law. Where the existing policies do not exist or are not sufficient, that's where you really see the mitigation measures that are included in the M M R P. Now I wanted to talk a little bit about the response to comments. Response to comments are required with an E I R, but they're not required to this level of detail with an M N D. But we really wanted to honor the town ethos around public participation and not have this just be an exercise. So we compiled all of those emails and letters that we received on the IS M N D. We received forty-seven communications and comments. This is a really high, awesome number, the number of comments that we received and the volume of comments. In talking to my colleagues, many of them received three or five. And so this is really speaks to the town's level of participation that we have here. And so we answered all of those comments in the same way that you normally would for an E I R. So we created a response to comments memo, and that includes a short description of the sequel process, a summary of the letters that were received, what's called master responses, when there were multiple comments on the same topic, and then responses to the specific comments on the environmental analysis. So there's a whole system that you probably noticed where the letters are coded in the upper right-hand corner and in the margin, and so you can correspond everything back and forth and, and follow all of that response to comments. And then there's also some text revisions to the IS M N D itself in response to those comments or to provide some additional clarity. So in that big memo, it's a big thing because it also includes a reproduction of every written comment that we received. So if the comments were related to the environmental analysis in particular, then we answered all of those. But then there's almost always comments that are not specifically related to the IS M N D. And so the practice is not to provide written responses to those. And then a little bit more about the master responses. As you can imagine, there was multiple comments on the same topic on a number of key things that will not surprise anyone that's been participated in that, in this. People wanted to understand the scope of the Sequoia analysis. They talked about aesthetics, evacuation, wildfire, geologic hazards, fire maps, parks and recreation, the safety element update, timing and connection, as well as the cumulative analysis. So if you go into the master responses, you can read more detail on each of these different topics. We've been talking a lot about the M M R P. This is the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or sometimes mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. That P can go either way at the end. And this is just like a screenshot, they pretty much all look the same. This is a standard within the industry where you list the mitigation measures, the implementation responsibilities. So who's in charge of doing it, when they're supposed to do it, and what is supposed to be done. And so this is a tracking mechanism that is used across the board related to Sequoia projects. And then really important to touch back, the council talked about this quite a bit at the last meeting. But just in case anybody is new to this conversation, the Fire Marshal presented what he called key approaches to fire safety at the February fifteen, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. And then Planning Commission recommended that Town Council consider adopting those measures. And so we analyzed that, gave you a table at your last meeting. And our recommendation is to use that table as the basis of a collaborative work plan. I talked to the Fire Marshal just before this meeting tonight. We did a little touch base so that he would know what you were talking about. And he has been continuing to do work on some of the items in the table. So we have some language updates for you that we can prepare for the next meeting. So they're relatively small things, but it's just good to see things are continuing to move forward, even since we drafted that a week or ten days ago. We could also think about this as part of the process to update the town's M O U. That's memorandum of understanding with the Woodside Fire Protection District. So that's another place we want to pull some of those things out and work with the fire district on. So what our thinking is right now, if you agree with this recommendation to make this into a work plan, we could prepare some type of resolution, or you could make some kind of motion similar to what you made earlier related to the council subcommittee memo to express your interest and commitment to follow through with those items. So you could do something in the form of a motion, or if you wanted it to be more formal, we could prepare for you a resolution for the next meeting that expresses your commitment to seeing those items through. So that would be a good thing to hear your feedback on this evening, how you would like us to proceed with that. So that concludes my general overview. The technical consultants are all here tonight to answer your questions. And if you want any, if any questions come from members of the public that you would like our technical experts to answer, that would be very helpful if you would flag those for us as well. So we're looking for anything that might help you in your deliberation or decision-making on the IS M N D. We only have the technical consultants scheduled to be here tonight for this meeting in terms of timing. So now is the opportunity, if you have anything for them. So as you know, I usually answer a lot of the questions myself. This is so specialized that we will have to refer out to the experts. And so myself and Curtis from Urban Planning Partners can kind of direct those questions to the right people if you have them. So that concludes our presentation, and we'd be very happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, again, technical questions in particular, we have our consultants here tonight, and this is the time, very technical questions about the IS.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We do have a, a need to bifurcate some of the discussion here. So we might want to talk about the process going forward so that council members can properly frame their questions.
Thank you for reminding me, yes. So tonight's agenda item on the housing element and related documents will be segmented to permit, permit the two conflicted council numbers to participate. We will conduct this hearing similar to the study session, here's a summary of the process. There will be a staff presentation on the IS M N D. The council will ask questions on all items except for forty-three ninety-four Alpine, forty-three seventy Alpine, and forty-three eighty-eight Alpine. We will then go to public comment on the item. Then we will have council questions and discussion on those three properties, forty-three ninety-four, forty-three seventy, forty-three eighty-eight Alpine. And that, that discussion will occur without Vice Mayor Wernikoff and Council Number Hasko. And then once that discussion is completed, Vice Mayor Wernikoff and Council Number Hasko will return, and the full council can discuss the remaining questions on the IS. Okay, so, all right, so then to clarify, then questions and just questions specifically on items other than forty, but those three properties.
I'm really looking forward to hearing from our specialists on, on, on facts on indigenous artifacts from this IS M N D. And in particular, I would call out the Dorothy Ford Park and Glen Oaks, knowing that that is one of the highest densities of indigenous population.
Did you have? Whoever it was. Specific questions, or do you want to hear about generally how do they do that type of analysis?
I have a question about what he found, what he. Yes, whatever, I want information.
Okay, Curtis, could you?
Curtis.
Come on and help us to direct traffic, please.
Hi, my name's Curtis Banks with Urban Planning Partners. And let me get our, John, if you could come on and help with that question? If you could unmute yourself.
Yes, this is John.
Just as, um, just letting people know, I'm, I'm a little under the weather, so my voice is a bit scratched at the moment, and, and I, I gotta admit, I did not hear the, the question, the, the feed was going, coming in and out. That could be repeated.
So it's John Gus, that is our, our expert on the field of indigenous artifacts and effects on, on of this IS M N D that you found, no, there was no significant finding. So I'm, I'm asking a question of how was the process, how was that aspect of the process analyzed and, and what the findings were, because I'm not familiar with it. And I, and I, what I said was that, as far as I know, the floodplain of the San Francisco Creek is Franco's Creek are the highest, among the highest populations of indigenous, previous indigenous populations in the Bay Area, actually, mutation. And I was wondering what we had found effects on, what, what we would expect from, from this development, how the IS M N D reflects that expectation.
So John, could you describe for us how you do your analysis for this level of a document? And then explain a little bit what your findings were?
Yes, so, so basically, this, this assessment starts with.
A, a record search, this is the previously known, previously recorded sites. I'm just gonna call them sites, but resources, cultural resources have been found. And this would include both, you know, built environment as well as archaeological resources. Sounds like the question is specifically more on the archaeological side. So basically, we, we will, we, we look within, I believe this was within a mile of the, excuse me. A, a mile of the, each, each, each of the, the parcels under study. We, so we take into account what has been found before. We reach out to the Native American Heritage Tuition and ask if there have been any Native, if the Native American groups have registered any resources. And then we also take into account such things as, as natural features. One, one major one, obviously, as we noted here, is water, access to water. And we take all those, those together as well as what can be expected as far as geologically, which geological strata will actually support preservation, and that all that together comes, all that together comes to, we make an analysis of how, how sensitive an, an area is. We can think of it as, you know, a creek. In the past may have been very highly populated, but if flooding of that creek, you know, causes, causes destruction and disruption of those resources, then it would not, those, we'd find there would not necessarily, would not necessarily satisfy, is primarily question for, criteria for, under, under Sequoia, for the cultural resources version of what is, the, the term significant means. Basically, is there more to be learned from there? Then, then just what would happen like basically when it was first recorded? We then, we, we take, and, and so with that analysis, we, we then make, you know, basically a map that, that that shows what we believe the sensitivities of a particular area are. At a, this programmatic level, there were not individual surveys, pedestrian surveys, at the programmatic, sorry, at the project level, surveys, pedestrian surveys would generally be required.
Well, thank you for being here. It's wonderful. We under, I understand that this particular place is that the location that divided the two tribes, the two, that this particular tribe here along Los Franco's Creek was divided completely between half of them going to Mission Dolores and half of them going so, and so we, there are very, very, very few representatives who would be speaking for this area. And so it really is up to us to, to find out what is here before we damage it further.
Do you have any other questions, Mary?
Sure, I have lots of questions, but I'm gonna have.
I just had one clarifying question, is the opt-in program included in this IS M N D?
Yes.
I didn't see it.
At a program level, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks. So when I look at, and Laura, you hit on it in your intro, some of the terminology is not intuitive. A, a lot of it, most of it. So, so I'm gonna ask for kind of a couple of specific refinements. And I know there's a ton of documentation here, but when we go to, first, the wildfire section, you know, unlike other sections, there's not even a, it's just less than significant, there's no need for mitigation. And I think you referenced that some of the mitigation can be itself mitigated because there's existing law and things like that. But I really need to understand why such a significant risk in town is not at least in the category of less than significant with mitigation. So that's my first question, trying to understand that better than I do. I don't know if that's a specialist or an expert topic or.
Curtis, could you see if you can speak to that?
Sure, I'll do. So basically, it was deemed less than significant based off of a lot of the, the policy. So basically, it was deemed less than significant based off of a lot of the, the policies and, um, measures that you have, so we looked at the evacuation analysis that was recently done for the community, and one thing we, we talked a, a lot about with the planning commission, there aren't specific criteria for the amount of time that it takes to vacate an area to determine when it's a significant impact, and Bob Grandy with Fair and Peers can talk a little bit about that, but that, basically, the housing element also includes, and your general plan includes, a number of policies that help address wildfire impacts. So within the housing element, you have, um, including, uh, best practices for fire resiliency and collaboration with the fire district. You have policies of, uh, working with households on vegetation management. As you all know, the maps are being updated, so there's a number of things that you're already doing that, um, reduce wildfire impacts, you already have the whole town is subject to the most stringent fire, uh, building code standards for, for fire impacts, uh, not just in high fire areas, but in the entire town. So basically, the reliance on your existing policies reduce the impacts to a less than significant level, and you already have in place measures that, uh, that provide the mitigation that's needed, so they, because there are already adopted policies and codes by the town, you don't need to include as mitigation measures.
So, as Laura presented, we have an ongoing, whether it be a work plan or commitment to work with the fire district, and the planning commission did recommend that we adopt or commit, um, I don't know the right word exactly, to those measures. So I'm trying to square that, because it does seem it might not be mitigation, but it's certainly an enhancement of what exists, that we all, as a community, I think, understand we have something to do, um, as opposed to the SEQA level analysis, um, so I'm, I'm just on a non-SEQA level, I'm trying to square the fire experts, yeah, a, and the town being open to working with them to implement certain measures with not, no mitigation needed. Um, I, I don't know if you have a comment on that, it's just a hard thing for a non-SEQA expert to really understand, it's something we want to do, but it's not significant and it doesn't need mitigation, um, any comments?
Let me speak to that a little bit, um. So, the way that I'm thinking about it is comparing to another community, maybe, that had similar types of fire danger, but didn't already have proactive policies in place. So if we were that type of place, then the mitigation measures probably would have been adopt a more stringent building code and apply it to more of the community, well, we've already done that, right? It would be do more vegetation management, we already have a program for that. It would be, you know, work with the fire district on these different initiatives, so those would probably be the mitigation measures if we weren't already doing those things. And then, when I was talking to the fire marshal about all of this, and you all know, we spent many hours, um, talking about this, he and I, great conversations. Um, he wanted to have the opportunity to bring forward kind of everything that he's working on, and I think really took that opportunity to do that, and I didn't understand him to be saying that you have to do these things as mitigation measures, he was rather saying, we, I think, as a fire marshal, if you do all these things, we will be safer in general. So not really specifically related to the housing element, it was more that the housing element brought forward this good conversation. So that's how I understood, um, my communication with him, and I think what our presentation to the planning commission illustrated, I think many of you have watched that, so I think of it as supplemental, good information that came out of the process.
Okay, enhanced, not required.
Enhance, not require, that's how I think of it.
Right, um. All right, um, with the recent flooding that we've had, and I'm sure you have to put a line in the sand on when these analyses are finished and what they can incorporate, I'm kind of curious if we have information on flooding that might be new and different and need to be taken into consideration. I don't know that that's for this ISMD, although if there was something that were huge, I'd kind of want to know about it and think about it. Um, I know that this was pre, this was prepared a long time ago before the flooding, so any comments on how to think about that in terms of uh, new, were there flooding issues arising around the various sites that might cause us to need more information, or did that not happen? You know?
Um, I think it's a really good question, it's hard to kind of put it into the SEQA context, right, because the analysis happens at a certain time, based on the information. Um, maybe something that would be helpful, Curtis, do we have the right person to explain how that type of analysis is done under SEQA, just so that we can learn from that? Because maybe we have a, something that we can take forward in another form.
Sure, if, um, we we can see if one of our consultants can help us a little bit, we do not have, yeah, that specific consultant on board, I don't know if uh, James Martin with Environmental Collaborative has any thoughts he could provide on that?
And, and I'm not trying to add to the workload here, it's just we have a obvious issue in town, and whether we consider it now, or or just because of the way this process works, that timeframe does needs to be, issue has to be considered separate apart from what we're doing here, I just thought while we had the experts.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, we can at least understand better from them how the SEQA analysis is conducted.
Yeah.
And see if we've got any takeaways, um, that we can apply from other things. Um, James, I don't know if you want to go ahead, and then Sam also has his hand up, so maybe James first?
Yeah, so this is Jim Martin with Environment Collaborative, I prepared the biological resource section. I think the question was back to our rainfall levels and how that could affect flooding and conditions of creeks. Um, and, um, I think in a, in a broader sense, in terms of the biological resources, say rare plants, that this drought has probably inhibited some of the flowering patterns of rare plants. Um, and, and these rains are welcome in terms of biological resources, uh, in general. The, what we've discussed in the biological resource section and laid out in the framework in terms of the regulatory process, and the, the excellent policies of the town, um, they capture the, the, the potential impacts of future development. Um, there's a process that the town would follow for any of these housing sites when they move forward as a, at a project level, and would require further detailed uh, study and assessment by qualified biologists and other specialists to make sure if conditions have changed, if there is a sensitive resource on those sites, they get identified, addressed, protected, and mitigated for. That was part of, uh, the process of, of concluding the impacts of this planning level document would not be, um, significant in terms of the various criteria for biological resources. And also in accordance with state and federal law, protecting those sensitive resources, wetlands, riparian habitat, and, and listed uh, special status to plant animal species. So, I, I guess, I hope that helps clarify things.
Yeah, well, thank you, it's very helpful. Um, I guess that leads to something that Laura, you, you actually raised earlier, which is, okay, we have the ISMD, it's got to be locked at a certain time, and you can't continually evolve it up till the day you're, you're trying to prove it. Um, so what's the precautionary impact, so is it, if I understood you correctly, say, a site is about to be developed and there's no exemption, so it would undergo a, a separate SEQA review? It's not exempt. Is it the exact ab initio, uh, analysis, like as if this never took place? Or is it a modified kind of bring down starting with this analysis of that site, so for example, um, I'm trying to figure out if, if right now they didn't know about the flooding, but in the next year, there's a ton of flooding on a site, um, and there's a development proposed right near the flooding site, what would that SEQA analysis at that time include? Would it be comprehensive, as if this never happened for a project at that point? Or would they leverage this, I just need you to restate that, because I think you covered it, but it wasn't what I was thinking of when you said it, um, now that the stack patterns come out, I kind of appreciate that example being, kind of leading through.
Okay, so, um, this analysis, I would say, is important background analysis, an important reference. Um, and for any specific project, we're gonna go to this document first and think about what we've learned, and then what additional analysis would be necessary, um, within the different topic areas. And so, um, one of the things that's important in SEQA, and I sometimes reverse this, so Cara, listen and make sure I get this right. SEQA is analyzing the project's impact on the environment, not the environment's impact on the project. Okay, so this is important in areas like flooding, right? So we're looking at the overall in the town right now, we're experiencing a lot of water in a lot of places we'd rather it not be. Right, but it's, we're looking at the, the potential impact for these projects that get built in the future, right? That's not going to change that, that much. Because any project that gets built is going to have its own, um, grading and drainage plan, it's gonna have its own systems built in, it's gonna have modern engineering systems. It's gonna take into consideration all of its slope and topography and drainage, it's gonna have geologic review. And so we're, we're saying that those projects isn't gonna make the overall situation worse.
So the question more granularly in that example is, um, say they're, they're building a certain amount of impervious surface, and that's new and different relative to flooding patterns historically, like you, you could build those drainage dishes, but would they go back to this document and say, oh, in 2022, because that's when this was done, um, there was no flooding there, so that's okay, or would they do the bring down between 2022 and now going, oh, look, there, there was a lot of flooding in that particular area, now we have to incorporate that into the project analysis at that time. I'm worried about what happens between this date and the date the project comes up, and I, I would want some assurance that new and different information can be integrated into the SEQA analysis at the time, that's the comfort I'm looking for.
Okay, let me start and then, um, see if Cara can add. Um, any specific development project that comes up will, would be evaluated under SEQA, under the laws and best practices at that time. And these would be reference materials, but they would not exempt someone from doing the appropriate study at that time, if it was triggered by that development under SEQA. And the best practice is evolving, do you know what I mean, always in these areas, especially as we're trying to deal with climate change? And so I think, um, you know, it depends if it's, it, the engineers that study this type of thing have, um, best practices and standard methodology that they use, and so I can't speak to how quickly that methodology is evolving, but I can speak to that any future project would use the best methodology available at that time, would not go back to this in 2022 if it is evolved.
And presumably, the engineers have a duty, a professional duty to look at the intervening time. I mean, you, you can't guarantee it today and SEQA doesn't require it, but I presume in practice, the engineer engaged would have to look at what's been happening since this.
Yeah, and this might be something, I mean, it kind of depends on if you want to get into this, but John Wallace, our town geologist, may be able to speak to how he views it, because he views something that, he works on something that people think of as stagnant, right, but it's not actually stagnant, it's really influenced by, um, water and soil movement and landslides. So if, if you're interested, we could get into that, but I'll, I'll, I'll see what you.
Well, okay, just to give everyone assurance, I only have one other question, so, uh, if he can quickly just do a bring down of what, help me understand that, um, intervening time period that that would be taken into account or not, um, after an ISMD is adopted, covering the general area, but not that specific project.
Okay, I think I understand, um, John, can you speak a little bit to how um, your analysis evolves over time and kind of how you bring new best practices in?
After an ISMD is adopted.
Yeah, after we have a document like this that like has a, a timeline on it.
Okay, um, so, in, in our practice, it's, it, it's constantly evolving, so if you're stagnant, you're falling behind, um, so, from a geologic standpoint, um, we're, we don't look, uh, we're not a, what we say, call it a checklist reviewer. We don't just look at a checklist and say, have they addressed certain items? Our policy is to go out and look at every site in the field, um, because it changes over time, the maps, uh, may not be accurate from six years ago, there could be a landslide that's occurred in the interim, so we go out and proactively look at each site that comes up for review uh, and factor that into our, um, evaluation of whatever permit is at hand. Um, we're also continually maintaining, um, our professional practice and attending conferences, so we're always, you know, maintaining our, kind of the cutting edge, um, of the industry so that we can apply that to the town. Um, I would like to say, though, that, um, and the town residents don't necessarily know this, but our company practices all throughout the state, and we do peer review all throughout the state. And what George Mater did here in setting up the town with regard to geology and working with Bill Cotton early on, um, in blending planning with geology has set this town up far better than any other town we've seen, uh, in our experience in the state, so kudos to the town for already having those, uh, policies in place. It makes our job much easier, and it makes practicing consultants' jobs that much easier when they come into a town, they know what they're up against, they can't get away with a lot of the things they can get away with in, in other communities, and, and that directly relates to, um, public safety.
Okay, thank you, thanks very much.
So if you have a question for him?
I have a question for John.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I desperately need a break, I don't want to interrupt this whole thing, so I could run out while you're asking the question.
We should all take a break.
I, I needed a break.
All right, all right, it's, it's.
You should go.
Yeah. Um, watch, well, okay, we'll take, we'll take, we'll take two or three minutes, we'll come back at, at ten, thirteen. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that break, and, uh, we will start up again, I believe Mary had a question for John Wallace.
Hi, John, it's great to see you, I've been hearing a lot about you from the, uh, geologic. I, uh, am interested, I mean, I think that, that the key here is that. I, uh, am interested, I mean, I think that, that the key here is that, uh, that this, um, plan is contingent on using the entire Los Trancos, the entire riparian zone going down Alpine Road. And, um, that has a, a double effect, of course. One is, when you have a creek like that, doesn't that mean something about the geo, the geology underneath it? It's cutting through, is it a reason it happened besides just gravity? Uh, but also, um, how do you feel? I think it's, the, a lot of this element is contingent on the, on Cotton Shire's, uh, analysis that our geologic risk was less along the Portola Road. Uh, and I wanted to just understand a little bit more about that. Uh, it may seem very self evident to you, but, uh, it's not completely self evident to me. And I think to maybe to argue a lot of community here.
Sure, uh, good question. So the Los Trancos Creek Corridor, coming up for possible housing along that corridor would be looked at equally as stringently as any other property in town. The one thing that, that commonly gets misunderstood with regional maps and even the town map is that entire corridor is mapped as a, what they call a stable, unconsolidated zone on the town, uh, movement potential maps. And that corresponds with, with state hazard mapping that calls it a liquefaction zone. And those two get misconstrued dramatically. It is not a liquefaction zone. It's a, and so everyone thinks that, oh, you're building in a liquefy, liquefaction zone. No, it's just an alert that anybody that builds in that zone needs to, uh, study the effects and possible, uh, potential liquefaction, uh, effects in that area. There have been a number of studies already done along that corridor, um, including, you know, the Stanford Wedge. And, uh, in general, it's not liquefiable at all. And i- in a geologic sense, uh, in general, the closer you get to the bay, you increase your potential for liquefaction. The further up the mountain range you get in general, the less chance you have for liquefaction. And so, uh, the materials are much coarser and a lot of debris flow deposits. So that's what we've been finding with trenching and drilling and testing all throughout, um, the, most of the Los Trancos Creek Corridor. But it all has to be proven and has to be, uh, tested and, and studied, uh, just like any other site. So yeah, any other questions on that, um, feel free to, uh, ask them.
Well, I suppose the other thing that's geologic is, is flooding and, and, uh, and building in a, in a flood plain, uh, which I think is amounting to what we're doing. And even from your description that you just gave, uh, I, uh, is there, it, does that need to be included in this, uh, in this analysis and a, and at what level, I guess?
Well, from, from my standpoint, um, in all the projects that we review, there, there is a specific, criteria that the project engineer, uh, has to evaluate the potential for flooding. And, and it's done on a site specific basis, so that certainly would be performed um, at the project level. Someone else could possibly answer if that needs to be put into the, the level of the ISM and D. Uh, but certainly it, it gets looked at and on every project.
Curtis, did you want to add to that?
I think John, John covered it. It would be flooding would be analyzed. One of the things with SEQA and looking at this document opposed i- in, what needs to be evaluated at a later time. It, you look at, is there new information that wasn't known at that time? Or there, if there are a change in circumstances? So when you have a specific project that is submitted, you would event, look at what has been evaluated to date and determine if there are a change in circumstances or additional information that needs to be evaluated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, did you have other questions? Judith, you said there's one more.
Yeah, just a more, and it's asking Laura to expand on something she's already somewhat addressed, which is, we're doing the safety element that's going to be evolving. And you kind of laid out the potential impact of adopting a safety measure that might actually require some environmental analysis, like the, say we adopt an ISM and D now, and then the safety element evolves in a certain way. What, what does that look like in terms of updating an ISM and D, what might trigger it? How does it work? Um, anything that you can offer to help me understand that?
So the safety, oh, I'm sorry, I don't have a virus. When I talk so much in all of these meetings, my throat gets really bad, so that's cop drop and everything. I have water, thank you. So sorry. I know it's awkward these days. Um, okay, so I'm sorry, I lost it. It went away. The safety element includes a number of different programs. And the safety element by definition is pretty broad. It mostly says things like, um, we're going to create this policy and then we have to then flesh out that policy. Or it, um, creates certain expectations around how different decision making is going to get made in town, both for private developments and also for town policy decisions. So it's pretty broad. Um, so it can change quite a bit without creating impacts on SEQA. And so what we would do is when the safety element evolves into its next draft, um, getting pretty close to be adopted, we would go back to that checklist, um, when I had all those different topic areas up on the screen. We would go back through all those topic areas, looking at, um, the SEQA thresholds, like through that specific lens of SEQA and say, has anything materially changed in the safety element that changes our findings of what was significant or not significant? So that's the way that we're going to think about it. And we, right now, we've heard some people say that they don't think the safety element is strong, but it does right now meet basic state law requirements. So we would anticipate it only becoming stronger through the town's process. So we would expect it to be only less impactful on some of those categories, um, that are in the SEQA checklist. If for some reason it became more impactful, then we would do probably an addendum where we would look at those different topic areas and reanalyze anything where the impacts have increased. But there's a process to do that. That's a pretty common process. And then that addendum has to be reviewed and approved before the safety element itself is approved.
And we're also doing an evacuation program. We have the data we have today. If veteran new data come up in six months and people think there might be something there to reconsider, is it a similar process? Because that's not, that's more detailed than the safety element. I'm just looking at upcoming safety efforts because it is our top priority as a council. And just trying to figure out when and if this document might be, need to be revisited as we learn more, develop more.
It would only have to be revisited. This document is to enable approval of these specific actions. Housing element, safety element, general plan zoning. And so this document is the SEQA clearance, we call it, for those actions. Future actions, we would have to see if any additional SEQA clearance is necessary. If we went to go implement, um, certain things in the evacuation study, for example. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my work.
No question.
Okay. I actually had one question on transportation. I did in fact try to read the VMT analysis. Um, I really struggled with it. It looks like the VMT analysis is saying that we get a slight, a very slight decrease in VMT with the, if, if the safety element is impacted in it. I was just trying to understand. Is that, do I, did I read that right? And I, I mean, it's always, VMT is a big struggle for a community like ours. And I'm just curious if, if the local concentrating more housing, building more housing here and having local, I was just trying to see if, it seems like a small impact. I'm just curious where that impact is coming from.
It's very difficult and we spent many hours, um, but Charlie explains it well. So I'm going to ask Charlie, could you speak to that a little bit? Sort of that, what our findings are and just a little bit of background on VMT so we can understand that finding.
Sure, happy to. Um, good evening, everyone. Charlie Coles with Fair and Peers were the transportation consultants, working with the project team on, uh, on this project. Um, and so, uh, I guess, um, maybe starting with the basics, just what is vehicle miles traveled and VMT? Um, the way that we think about it and the way that it's defined is, it's the distance that a car travels in a day, regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So one car traveling one mile equals one VMT. Um, so the VMT assessment, um, that we prepared and worked with the town in preparing um, is a comprehensive VMT assessment that looks at two primary VMT metrics. There's your project generated VMT. Um, and then here's the, the boundary VMT to assess the project's effect on, on VMT and the environment. Um, and so project generated VMT is defined, um, and it's similar to the idea of, uh, vehicle trip generation, which you might be more familiar with. And so it's, uh, really just the, the number of vehicle trips that are being generated by the project. And in this case, the project is the entire town of Portola Valley, uh, multiplying by the, the distance, um, that those trips travel. And those trips can go outside of Portola Valley, um, and many of them do. Whereas the project's effect on VMT instead evaluates, uh, the total on-road travel uh, within a specific geographic area or boundary. Um, and this is done before and after the project is built. Uh, that's, that's what our evaluation looks at. So the project, um, project's effect on VMT, um, one example that we often cite just helps everyone to, to understand what that, what this really all means, um, is the idea of, of a grocery store being added in a food desert. Um, so residents of a neighborhood where there isn't a grocery store and you need to travel a great distance to an existing grocery store. Um, what happens when you add a grocery store in that type of an environment? Um, it shortens many of those grocery trips and overall reduces VMT to and from that neighborhood. And, um, the, uh, the boundary of VMT or that project's effect VMT is a metric that would, um, you'd be able to see that. So, um, all that being said, uh, getting back to the, the specific question of, does the proposed project, in this case, the housing element update, does that improve, um, VMT for the town? And, um, that's what our assessment concluded. Our comparison is, um, the cumulative without project. Basically, the current housing element and safety element versus, um, in comparison to the new, uh, uh, housing and safety element and the, the update. And so, um, you, what you see is, uh, that building the right type of housing. And, and in this case, it's, uh, some additional multifamily housing in the right areas. In, in Portola Valley does in fact reduce, uh, the VMT on a per service population basis. Um, and when looking at the project's effect on VMT, there's really no change. Um, and so the, the main reason for that is, uh, for that metric, we're looking at the entire Bay Area region. And Portola Valley is, uh, only a, a small portion, makes up a small portion of the entire Bay Area region. So when you're looking at the, the effects of, of the project, you don't see much. And in fact, we didn't see any in the, uh, in the results. So hopefully that helps to, helps to explain a little bit more about the VMT assessment, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Okay, one more really nitpicky question. Let's say that somebody is commuting from, say, um, within the Bay Area, but say far away, like, uh, at Richmond or somewhere far away to a neighboring town like Palo Alto. And then they were to, and we build housing so that, so that, you know, that, that same, or people, or people live here, but are commuting to a nearby, you know, like, like, so instead of, you know, people who were making two or three hour commutes are making like half hour commutes. I mean, the initial trip was entirely outside our territory. Is it, is it reflected in the, like, when you look at project versus no project? Does the example like that where somebody was saved a lot of miles, but it's actually reflected in our analysis?
Um, it would, and it would be in that project effect evaluation. So that's where we're looking at the entire Bay Area region. So all nine counties, um, making up the Bay Area region. Um, and so that's where that, um, that changed. So making available more, um, more housing, uh, closer to larger employment centers. And that's where that, uh, that shift would, would show up.
So when you said mo- some multifamily housing in the right places can have a positive impact, that's, that would be example of, of, of something, of a positive impact.
That's right.
There are no other council questions for staff or last call. This is, this is the last chance we get to talk to the technical. Okay, if there's no other questions, then we'll move on to public comment. And this will be public comment for the entire, for everything. Uh, we will hear public comment on, on the items, including items with a recusal, but then we will, send people out for discussion specifically of the, uh, properties with the complex. So, um, we'll take public comments now on everything.
And through the mayor, can I just want to make sure we're giving, um, the right instructions to our expert team? Normally I advise them to listen to the public comment and the questions. And then we would come back to the council and the council through the mayor would ask, um, the consultant team to answer any questions that came from the public that you think need to be answered. Is that what you would like to do this evening?
Uh, I, I believe so, yes.
Okay, so, um, consultants, please listen to the public questions and then we'll wait for the mayor, um, to ask us which ones he would like us to answer.
Public comment. Rita.
Uh, thank you for taking my questions slash comments. Um, you know, there's a lot of information and there was updates. I, I really hope that these slides that were shown tonight are available for the public. I, I looked in the packet and I, I didn't see them. And I know we've asked before, but, um, perhaps it could be added on as the third link onto, um, information for tonight so that people can see it right, right away. I, you know, in the comments about the, um, mitigation measures, uh, they don't need to be in there because, uh, the town is doing them anyway. I'm not sure what's supposed to be the lifespan of this particular document, but, uh, that information should be there, just in case our rules, you know, this particular council might rule one way and our next council might rule another way. But, uh, the mitigation measures should be in there, no matter what other laws we, we have. And I feel strongly about that as my house is surrounded by, uh, beautiful oaks. And, uh, my neighborhood no longer has as many trees this week as it had in December because, um, they've, they've come down for one reason or another. And, uh, flooding in a, a specific location, you know, we've had lots of flooding in the, since December 27th this year with all the rain. I have a babbling brook on my property, one in the front. Well, okay, I have two. I have one in the front and I think I have one in the back. And I didn't have that before when I, uh, when I first bought my property. So I really hope there's information for each site, not a blanket statement for any sites that happen in town, but, um, for each particular site, because each one is unique. And for the V M T, I'm still trying to understand the whole thing about V M T. But we don't have transportation, public transportation in our beautiful town. And it's, it's going to make it hard for our new residents that may not have transportation or they need transportation to get to the store, to get to school, to get kids to school. And there's limits on how many cars they could have or expect it to have. But they're going to need more cars because we have no public transportation and we're not close enough to a place for someone to walk and then hop on's public transportation. As far as the questions that the public is asking, this is really important. And since we've missed a lot of the meeting tonight, I, I hope that someone's keeping track of the questions that we're asking so that, you know, if we ask 30 questions, that only two are not, you know, are answered, but more questions are answered. And then the ones that are not answered tonight are written down so that we can get answers at another time. It's important. It's our time, our town and our time. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Or in the room here? Are you not seeing other hands up on Zoom right now or their question rusty? Sorry, I should be saying comments.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah. Since this is a dense subject, I'm going to refer to my notes on this and as careful as I can be. The IS M M D's assessment and conclusions regarding elements impact town in early January by several specific significant impacts. The housing elements changes. It also identifies several important mitigation measures the district believes are needed to address those adverse impacts. I think we can all agree that the fire district has the technical competence to make that assessment. I also think we can all agree that in making that assessment, it did so against the baseline that the consultants are relying upon. It was fully aware of all of the provisions in the town, all of the state regulations that apply. And it's against that baseline that it determined the effects would be significant and need mitigation. Completely ignored the severe wildfire hazards identified in the Maritz Fire Hazards Map. The fact that the house included the Maritz Fire Hazard Map does not fix that failing. Rather, the map's belated inclusion in the housing element with no revision of the IS M M D's assessment based on the map's assessment of wildfire hazards demonstrates and confirms the inadequacy and deficiencies of the IS M M D. Two months ago. Why does this matter? Because the town has crafted the IS M M D as an assessment of the impact of all housing element and zoning code changes on our environment. By design and express purpose, the IS M M D supposedly assesses the impact of all of the changes on our wildfire risk. Proves the IS M M D in its currently erroneous and deficient form. The IS M M D can and will be used by every future developer who relies on the new housing elements, policies and code changes to satisfy and fulfill any future need under CEQA to assess the environmental impact of their project on wildfire risk. Let me repeat that. The erroneous finding of no significant impact will effectively allow developers who rely on our new housing element to proceed with no future need to assess the impact of their project on wildfire hazard and risk. Why did Cara Silver tell us that she? I, I will. Why did Cara Silver tell us that she wanted to be sure that the pop not need for mitigation based on significant adverse impact? And then adopting specific mitigation measures to meet that need? Can the measures themselves become binding conditions for future development of projects within the scope of the town's new housing element and zoning changes?
Thank you. Other public comment? I did not see any hands raised. Kristy Corley, go ahead. Here in the room.
Okay. I'm really concerned about traffic creeks, biology. Okay. I'm really concerned about traffic creeks, biology and cumulative effects over many years and how we can prepare for development. I appreciate the colleague's memo by Commissioner Targ and Commissioner Brothers. I would like to see it all included in the M M R P. I don't think the, the colleague's memo covers everything. And I'd like to see the Woodside Fire District letter fully implemented into the IS M N D. Or the M M R P, right? I appreciate Council Taylor and Haskell's preliminary post-adoption implementation plan. It looks like a lot of work went into that. But adding 20 to 25% of residents to our community will be significant and it will affect our town, especially if the majority of the development is on Alpine Road. Please refer to the environmental factors potentially affected. So I'm going to read this since the audience on Zoom doesn't have it, but the environmental factors checked potentially affected, affected by this project involving one impact that is potentially significant. If it's not checked, it's not significance, less significant or not significant at all. So the only ones that were checked were air quality, cultural resources, geology, greenhouse gas admissions, hazard and hazard materials, noise and tribal cultural resources. Let me tell you what wasn't checked. Aesthetics, agricultural forestry resources, biological resources. That one really upsets me. Energy, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, parks and recreation will not be affected at all. Population and housing, well, we know we're going up in 25% population. And how, and public services, transportation, utilities, we've just been talking about utilities and infrastructure. Wildfire is not checked and mandatory findings of significance not checked. So this is really significant to me that these were not checked. So I put before you that list. It's page 23 in the IS M N D. Those of you at home can find that. Anytime. Okay, I would like questions answered on V M T if it included the Los Trancos residents. We know that we expect 735 residents and that is conservative. It will probably be more. On the creeks, we care about riparian buffer zones. We care about not losing our banks. As you have three pictures in front of you, the femoral creek is overflowing as of yesterday and it's up to its, to the bridge, almost overflowing the bridge. So that is our ditch, our femoral creek. And you now have a picture for the record. I also noticed that San Francisco Garter Snake is not listed in biology. And I'm wondering how old the trees are on Dorothy Ford Park. I think they're historical and those are my concerns. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I did not see any other hands on Zoom. Anyone in the room? No, okay. All right. Thank you. In that case, we're we're we will, we will raise questions, the council raise questions during the discussion as they see fit. Okay, next up, we will, we will now recue, our recused council members will leave so that we can have specific discussion on the three properties, 4370, 4388 and 4394.
Are there questions for the council members that remain? Do we have questions? I mean, before they leave.
Oh.
Find out if there's going to be any question. Like, I don't have any questions.
On those three?
On those three.
Well, question or discussion?
Okay, no, that's right. We're going to have the spec. We should probably just go over. Yeah, that's fine. I think that photo is
Okay, so yeah, this is specifically items involving those three properties that they are configured on. 4370, 4388, 4394 and the IS M M D. Is there anything you could think of in here that, I mean, I mean, it's mostly that applies broadly, but is there anything in here that specifically would have sort of touched on those three properties? I'm just, I just want to make sure we don't miss anything.
I don't think so. Excuse me, Cara, is there anything else you can think of? I mean, that the analysis is fairly general, right? But there are, you know, references throughout to certain aspects of it. So it's just a matter of if you had any discussion that you wanted to have on anything that specifically addressed those sites.
Well, I think you should ask a question about the femoral tree. Whether it has been adequately, adequately understood or, or mitigated against the existence of this femoral tree.
The one that goes across the sites at Nathor?
Yep.
There's certainly knowledge of it through the entire process. And it was considered by people, but by all of the experts. But the specific site plans will have to address it in detail. And that's where we evaluate it when that, when that stage comes in.
Yeah, I do think that with this kind of evidence of overflow, there should be some sort of settling, some sort of opportunity to settle this water down before it goes rushing down to East Palo Alto.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. What do you, what do you mean by settle down?
Well, in other words, these riparian floodplains that we're building in, they need to be considered and that water needs to be purified and slowed as it moves down through the Los Trancos Creek into the San Francisco watershed. And this kind, you know, if, if it means it's going to change flow, it's going to worsen flooding in East Palo Alto.
Okay, so a couple of things that I would add is there are water quality laws that enter effect. We are subject to the municipal regional permit that allows projects of a certain size to treat water onsite before it's discharged into the system. And so these new projects would presumably, depending on their size, be subject to those regulations. So you would have onsite stormwater treatment measures that would be required and be required to maintain, be maintained into the future. So that will happen automatically. Those are regional and state requirements that the town enforces.
I don't think we're seeing that in town right now. I mean, I don't see any, any water being held on, on the properties consciously.
The houses built next to me in the last two years, they had to build a huge retention. So yeah, it's, it's a code requirement.
Yeah, and we happen to have Howard now is our interim town manager and he is more of the expert on this. But I, I can tell you that new houses all have grading and drainage plans. A lot of water is held onsite by local standards. And then there's estate standards that will come into play for any multifamily development that happens in the future.
Anything else specifically on those properties? 4370 is the office park at the corner of Nathor and Alpine. 4388 is the future site of Willow Commons. 4394 is the empty site between Willow Commons job site and Roberts.
Through the mayor, it, it might be helpful to explain to the council the additional condition with respect to the ephemeral creek that was imposed by, or that is being recommended to be incorporated by the planning commission. Laura, I don't know if you have that language.
I'm sorry, Cara, I'm not following. They discussed the setback related to the ephemeral creek slash drainage. They talked about it being, from their perspective, they differentiated it being an aesthetic setback. And I think we maybe talked about this a little bit with this body to ensure that when future review is conducted, that there wouldn't be an assumption that just because the projects met that setback, that it was in compliance with all the town's policies, it would not be subject to additional environmental or engineering review. So they considered that and we're going to draft the language carefully to try to reflect that.
And we had talked about that at the study session.
That's right. That we did, I apologize. And, and the, and the setback was increased from five feet to 10 feet. And, and the, and the setback was increased from five feet to 10 feet.
That's solely, that's, that is not the safety standard. That's the buildings, when a project goes in there, it's, it's a whole separate review. Or they, I've seen sites where they've raised the building by two or three feet. That's, that's, that's the mitigation for a floodplain. Full council is back and we are talking about the overall IS MND.
Through the mayor, I just wanna confirmation, would the council like our technical experts to stay at this point? It's, it's up to you.
I have one or two questions that I would run by them.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll try to, they could try, maybe try to do those first.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think there'd be the question. This is, at least for me, it's kind of follow on on the public questions.
Please, yeah.
So the question about the VMT analysis applying to Los Trancos, I was curious about that.
Yeah, I was too. Charlie, you still there? Maybe, maybe to ask the question a little more detailed, does the, does that VMT analysis include the, the, people living in our spheres of influence, including Los Trancos Woods and possibly Ladera?
Sure, this is Charlie calls, I'm happy to jump in on this. So the Los Trancos Woods community located south, south east of Portola Valley, just immediately adjacent to the, the town's, town's borders, was included in the VMT assessment. The reason is because the CCAG VTA model, so the travel forecasting model that we use to calculate the VMT results that you see in the, the initial study, it includes two transportation analysis zones for Portola Valley. And what a transportation analysis zone is, you can think of it as basically a polygon. And so the entire travel model is made up of all of these shapes and polygons that basically represent physical, physical space in, in our world, in the model. And so within each of those transportation analysis zones, there are what's called centroid connectors. Those centroid connectors then connect to the modeled transportation network. So a little bit of modeling education for everyone. But what that, really what that means, and the reason said, just to help to explain why the Los Trancos community was included in the VMT assessment is because the way that those transportation analysis zones are formed, they actually do include that Los Trancos community. So they, they needed to be included in, in the, in our calculations. But the way that we, the way that we do the VMT impact assessment is by looking at an efficiency metric. So we're actually dividing the VMT results. So, you know, the actual, the vehicles models traveled, we're dividing that by the surface population for the total VMT per service population metric. Or in the case of the home base VMT metric, we're dividing that by the residential population. And so we're dividing by the entire population, both including the Los Trancos Woods community as well as town of Portola Valley. So that we're able to have a more apps to apps comparison on the VMT results. So it's a combination of a limitation of the model. But also the, when looking just physically and geographically, the way that the Los Trancos Woods community is located, the residents of that community would still use the same roads that, that traveled through Portola Valley. So that hopefully that helps to just answer the question and explain a little bit more in the reasoning why it was done that way.
Oh, what about Ladera? The neighborhood just north of the pull down.
Yeah, so the, the Ladera community, that, that was actually a little bit, basically the inverse. So that community, the land use and population in that community was essentially moved out of the transportation analysis zone. So we did some refinements in coordination with city staff to, to basically fine tune the, the land use assumptions and the, the number of people and the population that are included in those transportation, those two transportation analysis zones for Portola Valley. So for the Ladera community, they're located in a, in a portion of the community that it was easy enough for us just to locate them into the neighboring adjacent TSC that's outside of Portola Valley.
Should I try to put that in layman's terms?
Sure.
Okay. Los Trancos is in. Ladera is out. And it makes sense to us because Los Trancos residents move through the town and Ladera residents don't directly move through the town, you know what I mean, to go out of the community. And then there's lots of reasons.
But, but for example, somebody who drives from Los Trancos Woods to a job outside of town, are the miles they travel through town included in this analysis? Or is that a, that's a, that's a boundary?
Yeah, they basically then do the math so that it doesn't count against us. Right? So the Los Trancos area is included in our, like, broader analysis. And then they have sort of like a scaling factor to make sure that our VMT has a relationship to our population. So Los Trancos is part of our population's, like, behavior, like, how much they're traveling has similar, is the same as Portola Valley. But then we scale it according to the population so that it fits. That helps, it's really, it's really hard. We had a lot of long meetings, yeah.
These are comments?
We have questions. We're, well, if you want to follow up on questions, so. Sorry, you guys, sorry, more, more questions for the.
So I, I'm gonna try for a difficult one. And if I fail, please forgive me. I think this question is for Cara. It's basically that this, the effort we're making here is to provide our greatest possible safety and protect the environment of our community. I'm wanting to know what mechanism for inclusion for the legal aspects to support the legality, what we can do, what we can majorly do, as Rusty pointed out, to confirm that we will have long-term legal support for the effort we're making right now.
Thank, thank you. So I, I had a little difficulty hearing all of Rusty's comments because of the audio. But as I understand it, there were some technical comments about the actual analysis that was in the MND. And I believe that we have responded to, to that, those particular questions. We have, you know, some disagreement over whether the, the Moritz map was actually included and in the first draft, but we thought that we had resolved the issue by formally including the map in the, in the final draft. And so we think that that issue is now resolved. I also heard that there were some additional concerns that were brought up by the fire district. And as I understand the dialogue between Laura and the fire marshal on this issue, there have been several discussions, some, some really substantive conversations between the, between Lauren and Don Bullard. And I think that there's been a, a listing sessions as well and that, and that the fire marshal has come up with a list of key approaches of, of measures that he thinks should, that we should collaborate on as a group. And from the fire marshal's perspective, I don't think that all of those measures were intended to be part of the SEQA process. And the fire marshal has, has told us that he has not had a lot of experience with the SEQA process itself. And, and as Laura said, these terms of art, in terms of significance and defining what a wildfire safety issue is under SEQA is certainly not his area of expertise. His area of expertise is, you know, fire prevention in, in general. And that's, that's the focus, I think, that Rusty has, has called out. And that's what we, we certainly have a plan going forward to incorporate all of the, you know, key fire safety measures that have been identified by the fire marshal into some type of MOU or some other document. And we do plan on, on coming up with an approach to codifying those.
I, I think you didn't quite understand my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Sure, it was because I was kind of opening it up in a kind of a way, a vague way. I think what we wanted to, what we wanted to do is make sure that we, that, that these policy of whatever, what are we calling them? Whatever we're calling them, adjustments on the, are as legal as possible, as binding as possible. So we don't want them to sort of fade away with the next project or whatever. So we wanted, we want to include them in the IS MND. I, I'm, I'm asking both you and our C P R to make sure that we're doing the full extent of what we need to do to include those.
Okay, so council member Hapty, are you talking about the, the two identified measures that? Okay, yes. So I, I, I think that what we will do is work on some language to include the exact language that were, that was incorporated into the, into the colleagues memo, this, the, the town council colleagues memo related to those two items. And they will be amended, amended or appended to the MMRP. And we will expect those to be enforceable. We have an action plan to, and, and so staff will, will work with the subcommittee to develop an action plan to act, to implement those measures.
Thank you. The only other question I have, is there a reason why you can't include geologic in that amendment? Is it, wildfire was mentioned, but not geologic safety?
I don't think there's a reason why we couldn't include geologic safety into that list of things. You know, as we heard from the town geologist, though, we already have perhaps the best geologic safety program in the state of California. So I don't know if we need to spend more time studying it.
Not a, not, not a position we want to lose. Being the best is always good, you might as well continue to try to do, do the best. That, that makes a lot of sense.
Appreciate it.
Follow one. Okay. Mary, I was a little confused whether you were focused on the woodside fire protection. No. Okay.
But that was where my focus was. Maybe it could have been.
No, no, there's no right or wrong. I just wanted to understand. And it is getting to be late, but Cara, in terms of making sure there's, you know, a legal commitment on the, the key approaches on the fire, maybe you can comment on that separately since our subcommittee was not really focused on those. I am curious what commitment, like legal commitment we're envisioning for those points we follow. And you might have covered it, I apologize if we're making it up.
Right. So in, at the study session, we prepared a, a memo that addressed each one of those particular items. And then we identified the responsible party for implementing each of those items. And, you know, since they are fire-related, a lot of the responsibility lies with the fire district. And so I, I would suggest, because it is really a mutual effort, some of the, some of the initiatives would be taken on by the town with the assistance of the fire district. But, you know, the majority of the initiatives really are in the hands of the fire district. And so it's difficult for us as a third party to agree on behalf of another entity that these will be implemented. So the suggestion that I have for implementing those is to, we have an existing MOU structure, as I mentioned last time, it is quite old. And we think that it would be great to modernize that, that MOU agreement and to incorporate those measures into the agreement that, that we currently have.
Thank you.
Again, other technical questions for the consulting team while they're here? Let them go in before too long.
Yeah, because Chris has been here long enough and I actually am curious if the expert can just comment on the San Francisco Garter Snake and the age of the Dorothy Ford Park trees, if they're easy, easily answered. I'd like to have the only thing that I thought.
I think that's Jim from the biological analysis.
Yep. Hi, yeah, it's Jim Martin with Environmental Collaborative. So the San Francisco Garter Snake and other special status species were addressed in the biological resource section. We didn't delve into a lot of the species-specific issues in the text of the section, but we referred to the excellent Portola Valley Sensitve Biological Resource Assessment that TRA prepared, that's sort of a prescription. It identifies all the species that have potential for occurrence in Portola Valley, identifies their habitat, their status and applicable laws and measures required that the town uses and can use in the future in evaluating potential impacts of future development. And that if you look in appendix D1 to the IS MND, it includes all of the tables from that resource assessment. And in table two, on the second page of that table, it includes San Francisco Garter Snake and describes its habitat and status and recommends that any project within 500 feet of suitable aquatic habitat have the detailed surveys to confirm presence or absence and any restrictions or requirements related to that. So it's an, it's an excellent resource of the town and. And it's about 18 pages of tables. So perhaps they didn't see garter snake in that, but it, it covers all the bases.
Thank you. And do you know how old those trees are?
What was that?
Do you know how old the trees at Dorothy Ford Park and open?
You know, I would estimate that those are probably a couple hundred years old at least. The last thing we want to do at this point is a core sample to estimate that, that used to be a standard practice, but there are challenges with that.
Understood. You don't have to explain why.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one more. Very short. Did you by any chance access the mist netting data along Lotranco Street that has been produced within the last two years for, for birds?
Yeah, I didn't hear, you cut out there for the data source. The, were you talking about the e-bird data?
No, no, it was a study done from Jasper Ridge.
Off the top of my head at this hour, I can't remember it specifically. But, you know, we, the, we looked at all the available data that we had at our disposal at the time. I was preparing the section. And again, any of the.
Is that the kind of thing that you can access in this, in this context?
The, the e-bird data?
No, independent research.
Yeah. When they, you know, when it is accessible through some data source or through a local agency.
Yeah, it would have to be published for them to be able to identify it.
Yes.
Other technical questions? And I think we're on to our discussion.
Yeah, can I just, yeah.
Thank you. Thank, I thank the support team for all the work they've been doing on this for, for many, many months now. And, and, and yeah, go home, go to bed.
You guys are amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. Curtis, if you could stay. Everyone else, thanks for joining us.
Thank you all.
So we have a few things here. We have two significant decisions to make, and we've been trying to make them by the end of the month. And one of them, obviously, is the housing, and this is the other one. Just in the interest of kind of the pathway forward. There's a few steps that have to happen. I just wanted to see where people are and what makes people more comfortable with it. We have the ISM and the MMRP, which there's a reason for bundling those two together. And Cara, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think you're saying that you probably would need to add language to the MMRP that it wouldn't be ready tonight. But I mean, we probably would not see a final version of it until next week.
I, I did chance to talk to Rick Jarvis, our, our special CEQA counsel during the meeting. And he did suggest some, some wording, so we would be ready to incorporate that language. We could do that on the dais.
Right now?
Yes.
We could, staff could, if the council wishes to. That's what we're saying. We can walk you through it.
I guess my question, I mean, I, I hesitate to push this all off the one long meeting next week. Where do you get comfortable with this?
Yeah, I, I'm not there. And there's three reasons. One is I want to see the MR, MMRP language. It's really important to my perspective on this. And I'm sure Cara has done good work on it, but I need to think about the implications and given the hour right now, I'm not sure I'm going to fully understand it. The second is on the approach to the key approvals. As I said, I've been focused more on the other planning commission aspects. And I need a little more time to think through how that will work in terms of a commitment. The MOU is a two-page very high level document, so it's unclear to me the legal implications of it and how to move it towards something that I'm more comfortable with. I, I need to think about. But the most important, and those two are important to me, is that the communication issues tonight on a topic that is so central to what people in this town have focused on for so long, frankly, for no reasons within our control have been not able, the people have not been enabled to really hear us and understand us. And our memo was, you know, done in a very tight timeline. And I sat here and read it. People have not had enough time to really process it and consider it. And I think that's really important for the public to have an opportunity to look at it. I, I wouldn't feel like it's really been vetted enough tonight. And again, through everyone's best efforts to do this quickly. Those are the concerns I would have. So I'm not there, but I'll let other people talk about it.
Correct.
Well, I guess I feel like on the post housing piece, I feel like we got to some resolutions tonight. So I am comfortable with that part of it. I guess I agree. I, I think the MMRP, it seems kind of late to be doing. I mean, just, just getting the words right and then understanding the consequences of it. See, this seems like we're not, this isn't going to be a two-minute conversation. I mean, it might, you know, it might turn out we all look at it and go, that's great. But, but I think we're all going to want some time to look at it. So it feels to me like I don't have a problem moving forward with ISM and D. I just want to make sure that the MMRP captures the, the two items that we talked about. So I think that's where I'm at for tonight. I am, I just don't understand how we could. I mean, like, I'm, I'm comfortable that we'll get to the next meeting. I don't have a lot more questions on it. You know, but I don't see this passing that, but, but basically not doing MMRP at the same. I mean, it feels awkward to me because then if the next meeting, if we said, well, we don't approve the MMRP, does that mean we didn't approve the ISM? I mean, I don't understand how that linkage would work. So, so I guess what I'm saying is I think I'm pretty comfortable with it. So I'm hoping at the next meeting, it would go pretty quick. Like, I'm not planning to have a long ISM and D discussion at our next meeting. It's mostly going to be about MMRP, but I think it's still the time that'll give the public a chance to see if they think there's anything that we missed in terms of the post-housing adoption plan. And, and we'll just have, it, it just feels to me like the whole package would be there kind of at one time. Even though I hear you that, you know, we're, we're sort of pushing everything to the last hour.
I, I feel the same way and, and thank you. For me. I was amused myself. Nineteen panelists and seventeen attendants at one point. We were outnumbering them and, and now we're down to twelve attendants. We really, it's the opportunity for public to hear this process is diminishes greatly after eleven. So I would, I would vote for having all our wits about us and, and, and being clear and having the language in front of us and going for it in an efficient way.
So, yeah, I'm fine with all that. I think what I, what, with that exact point is what concerns me about next week, though, because we are really stacking it up for a lot of content for next week. And so if we're concerned about not having the public now, we're setting ourselves up to have a lot to review every week. And so I guess my question is, is there anything? I do think, I agree with you, Craig, that I do feel like we did. We already, you know, did the motion on the memo. And so obviously that will come up in what comments. But I feel like our work on that part is, is done. I agree that the MMRP and the ISM and D, they should go together. And I just looked up, back up, people feel like they need more time to review that. I'm wondering if there's any progress we can make tonight on the key approaches to try and figure out what approach we're going to take to that. I know, I recognize that people. Well, I'll leave it at that. I'm wondering if we can use a little bit of time to get as far as we can on that. Again, with the goal of having fewer things.
Yeah. I like that. I was also going to say, I mean, we, we don't, I, 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 I agree that keeping the MMRP and ISM together makes sense. I'm wondering if your comment about not having a long discussion about the ISM is there anything to hash out tonight on the ISM and D? Not to approve it tonight, but to visit this. We do a little more work on the ISM. Talk about, make next week a little shorter.
Well, I think I might suggest is if the rest of the council is willing, I think the subcommittee, we could work with Cara. I mean, we, we're, we're probably the strongest opponents of this. Of, of getting the language in MMRP. Right. And there's work with Cara between now and the next, well, basically between now and Friday. But so to, to get that language. I, I think we could move that piece forward because it, it feels sort of technical to me at this point. I mean, I think we've agreed on the location and we're trying to find the right way to put it in the MRRP that the lawyers think is, you know, reasonable and sound. But also what Judith and I were both looking for is a heightened sense of urgency on those items. So I think if, if we look at that, if, if, I mean, if the rest of the council would trust us to work with Cara and just make sure that we think that the way it gets worded and, and potentially inserted in the MMRP, then I think we could come back to the next meeting with, you know, she can bring back a proposal. But, but I think at that point, we will have looked at it and I, I feel like I'll have my issues kind of out of the way by then.
Does that extend to, I mean, if, if, so we've, we've we've adopted the, voted support for your, all, all eight topics. Those two topics going to MMRP. Is that, is that all that can be, that, does that leave you comfortable putting the ISM in next week? Or are there more? I guess what I've seen is what, what is there to talk about tonight or what would you like to hear tonight? What else do you want to hear?
Yeah, I, I'm with Sarah. I mean, the key approaches and, and with you as well. I mean, that's the only thing I just feels completely nebulous. The rest of it, I think I got it through.
And there's one thing we can't control, which is the public's comment. I mean, they haven't been hearing us. They haven't had much time. So there's that fact, but we can't address that tonight.
I mean, I think you just only, at least the way I interpret you's point is I reserve judgment until I hear all public comment. I mean, I'm, I'm, so far what I've heard, I'm comfortable, but something could come up.
Yes, my question is what, what reservation?
Right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
I guess another, okay, just on the ISM and D, the four key approaches. Another, maybe, maybe, I hope this isn't belaboring the point, but I, I'm perfectly comfortable with what you guys, what you've just proposed. You guys worked out the wording for the two items for the repub. And I recognize that we need to hear public comment. Outside of those two things, are there other things that you guys? I'm trying to figure out is how much, outside of those two things, do you anticipate a lot more need for discussion on the ISM and D? And if so, is there any of it we could do tonight? That's all I'm asking. Again, this is all to try and move us along. You know, it's just because we have a lot, we could have a lot next week.
Yeah, I, I don't think I have more I want to discuss tonight because I think that's the question you're trying to ask. Is, is there more that we could discuss tonight before we push it off? And I, I don't have any more to discuss. Yeah.
Same, it's kind of the same question.
That one, I feel like we could have a discussion. Because I, I don't, I don't know where we're, like, the ISM and D, the MMRP, I kind of know where we're going. But the key approaches, I mean, besides, we might write an MOU, which seems a little too vague to me. So I guess I'd like to see something a little more definitive in terms of a commitment to work on that stuff.
Memorandum.
Memorandum of, of understanding.
Yeah.
We have an MOU in place with this.
It's usually an agreement between two organizations, two, two, two entities on, on sort of things that they would work together on.
But the, the enforceability is a little unclear under the circumstances and the scope of them is very, very high level. And those are some of the concerns I have about the MOU. And I'm more than happy to hear staff's on that. The MOU is a two-pager right now that, not sure what it's worth, just to be blunt.
So through the mayor, a couple thoughts about that. Just to go back a little bit, staff's recommendation would be to have a meeting where the fire marshal comes to the meeting. And we talk through, like, kind of in a study session format, and we talk through this list and talk about priorities. And, you know, most of them in the table, as, as Cara alluded to, they really are the responsibility of the fire district. And so the town's role is to collaborate and to do some small pieces of it. But they're really the body that's in charge of making those recommendations in those cases to the council for you to consider. So in light of that, we do think that the MOU is a good option. It's a good way to refresh the MOU. It's quite old. It is very high level. It's very short. It doesn't necessarily reflect the current needs of both entities and how we're working together. So it would be appropriate to put certain ongoing work into the MOU that is, reflects our understanding of how we work together on routine things. An example of that would be, you know, the update to the fire code, which happens every three years. You know, we could give more detail into what we expect from that. We could talk about what their responsibilities are related to writing policy for the town to consider. We could talk about their interaction and expectations with my department in planning and building, what they're reviewing, to what level of detail, how do we collaborate on those things? So there's really good things that we could add into an MOU on an ongoing basis. And then there's probably a piece of this work that is kind of specific, maybe on an, like, an annual basis. And so maybe what we can do is reach an agreement with the fire district and perhaps with their board that there's a regular check-in between perhaps my position or another position within the town and the fire marshal, where we, we use this as the opportunity to create a new system where we have a shared work plan together. And once, it's, it's hard, I understand, that the council wants to give the community some assurances on this. But we are creating a new thing here in terms of creating this work plan with the fire district. We haven't even had that before. So it's a little, you know, we have to be a little creative in how we're doing it.
So how long do you think it would roughly take to create that? I, I realize there's a lot of variables here, but, I mean, is this a three-month process?
To do which step?
To create an MOU, to basically, what, what you just outlined of, you know, getting some agreement with the fire district board and, and basically, you're writing up the, the sort of details of an MOU along the lines that you're discussing.
I think the MOU process is probably a long one, especially in this situation where we don't have a permanent town manager. I think it's much more actionable for us to bring the fire marshal into this body and to hear from him about priorities and the specifics of his work plan, what he already has in mind. And then build off of that. Cara, did you have anything to add on timing? I mean, it's a, it's a pretty big endeavor to, to work out a new MOU.
So six months, I mean, I'm just, try to give me a ballpark range here, like six months? A year, three years? I mean, I don't, I don't know what big endeavor, we have lots of big endeavor.
Right, well, it depends on what the council's priorities are. Because we, I mean, I could tell you, from my point of view, we can't do any more work. We, we have to prioritize the things that we have and we have to hire. We, we have to prioritize the things that we have and we have to hire consultants to do things, um, in, in order to meet the council's expectations. So it depends on what else you ask us to do.
Yeah, and I, um, okay. So what I'm struggling with is the, the MOU feels pretty town-specific. It's a little hard for me to see how a consultant would come in and write this MOU for us.
No, they wouldn't. But if you're going to ask me to participate in the writing the MOU, then I have to hire a consultant to do something else that that consultant can do on my list.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I guess what I was after is I'm, I'm trying to figure out if some form of a meeting with the fire marshal with, I'll say some teeth, but I use that word loosely. And some commitment to get this MOU done in a period of time. If we could put that in the post housing adoption plan as a way to sort of, you know, move this forward and as a way to, you know, adopt that stuff. And I'm just struggling to figure out like, how do we give the communities some assurance that we're going to work on this and that we're not going to get caught in the, we have too much to do and so it doesn't get done. And, and I, I totally appreciate your workload. So I'm not aiming this at you. It's just this more like, this is something that needs to get done. And we just need to be committed to getting it done.
I, my general reaction is it really depends on where the council would put its priorities. We can't make every single one of these things a priority. We just can't with, you know, right now, I think 14 people work here full-time. I mean, it's just, it's not possible. So we, we, we are looking to you, the council, to decide what order you want us to work on these things. And then we can respond better with how long we think those things are going to take.
Some of these things are like a longer work process, it seems. Street widening, that's multifactorial. A couple of them are a little more granular. Revisited checklist. And, um, not started yet. And so, you know, you, you're, I think you've been thinking about these things longer than I have. I'm sure that's true. Um, there's 13 items here. And there's a lot of bits to it because you've taken a lot of work and put it in here. Are there themes that you maybe can help us frame out here? Um, so there's widening roads as infrastructure. Um, keep and expand progressive prevention policies in the 2010 safety element. That's kind of ongoing in this safety element, or maybe you can provide some context around that, like is that something that can fit into our proposal on the post adoption plan?
Safety follow-up?
Yeah.
I mean, and all these things, you know, several of them, I mean, like that one and two are our responsibilities and we're incorporating into the safety element. So they have a home in, in the safety element process and we will all be, they'll be very public and we will, you know, we, we can, we can verify that they're being prepared. Um, number four, the CalFire minimum fire is, there's, you know, the draft safety element has several policies in it that didn't speak to that. So it's again, there's a place for it and we can verify that it's there. You know, there's a, six and seven, um, seven A and the, and the non-combustible, I mean, they're, they're in the housing element program, their, their housing element program as well. And a lot of these things, not only are they being done, they are actually documented. And we have, I mean, the terms of commitment and accountability, I mean, they're already part of our, they're, they're here and we're, you know.
That's what I'm trying to do is break it down because it's late and I've been focused on other things and I was trying to actually whittle it down a bit. So that we could understand which are the more important things within the town's, uh, ac- action list. Before we, and then we have to of course prioritize them and figure out, you know, give, give the instructions or feedback that we're asking for.
I guess in terms of a commitment to them, I'd say that many of them we're already committed to. And, and, and we already, you know, once we have enacted the housing element, we're committed to several more of them. So, and well, and then we look on the safety elements. I mean, there's, there's a plan for almost everything in here to be done. If that's what I'm trying to say in terms of, of are we committed to this and are we, are we moving forward on it? I'm not sure what you're asking for beyond that. I'm looking at, this is from last week's meeting.
Fifty, page fifty-six from last week?
Uh, fifty-three from this week. Attachment nine, if I'm, if I'm looking at the right thing.
Sorry, page, sorry, page fifty-three.
I'm trying to think creatively about it. Um, I'm looking at the things that are the town's responsibility. And most of them, we have already made a commitment in one way or another. I think it's the question is whether that commitment is strong enough for what the council wants to give assurances to the public, right? So is it worthwhile to just talk through, we're all tired, but let's talk through the ones that the town has responsibility for. And we could just sort of freshen up our minds about what those things are, that maybe that will spur some ideas. So the first one is related to, there's policies that are in the current safety element that I've talked to Dawn about that he wants to carry forward and improve. And he and I have had specific conversations about what he wants to be included. And we have agreement on them. We just need to draft it and put it into the next draft of the safety element. And so he and I have already talked about it and, um, he's going to review the next draft of the safety element before it's public. So, um, that's our plan for that. Um, it's, that could be something that, um, we could potentially incorporate into your post-adoption process. But that feels like that could go there as just, we want to make sure it doesn't get lost, right? Because I think part of this is, um, consistency and sort of like accountability of the process, that the residents get what they expected and nothing gets lost. So that could go into the, um, post-adoption process, I believe, just for accountability. Uh, pursue widening roads. This is, um, a pretty large topic. Um, and so what we want to do in the safety element is create some program language and some like good best thinking that will guide us on our future actions. So the safety element's not going to be really specific around this. It's more going to be like outline a process that we'll then go through. So this could be another one that I feel like for accountability and monitoring would, could be good to go into the post, um, adoption process also. Um, then we go down to number three, establish multiple access, um, and egress, egress routes. Um, so what the town has done in the past, and this is something that, um, Jeremy did a lot of work on himself, was to be in contact with adjacent landowners, um, to see if we can secure additional access. So from my point of view, this is a really good one to capture someplace so we don't lose that practice because it rests really, it was with one person. So that would be great to me, as long as we have a reasonable timeline on that, that would be great in the post-approval process. Um, then the next one is number four, um, the minimum, um, the CalSafe minimum fire regulations. So what we already did, um, Cara added cross-references in our safety element to the, um, CalFire minimum safe regulations. And so I think that we already have accountability on this. The fire district will be implementing it. We're, we're aware of it. We talk about it with them regularly. I was talking to Dawn about it, about it today, um, the fire safe regulations. So I think that one we already have. Then the next one, number five, is to create, um, kind of a new process where we would have a review that we would model off our geologic reviews. Um, so that we could have individual site analysis. So this is something that I've talked with the, um, with Dawn and with the chief about. And we've, um, kind of traded some notes back and forth and we've got some ideas how to do this. And he gave me an example of what these studies are like. So I don't want to make a commitment on the specific outcome. It's more of a commitment to work with them on developing the appropriate Portola Valley site-specific type of, um, assessment that we want to do. But if it, if the language, um, you know, was open to creative approaches and not too prescriptive, that could also go in a post-approval process, I believe. Um, then the next two, we already have committed to do, um, with six and seven. So I think that those things are, um, already reflected in the policy guidance. And same.
What do you mean policy guidance?
Um. So like the number six, we already have a housing element program. We're going to do this every three years. Um, number seven, um, we already have part of this already in place. And, um, the fire marshal is probably going to propose more things on this topic to us, um, either in the fire code or separately. So there might be things that are coming from the fire district for us, um, for the town to adopt. But it's not anything that we have to initiate. We wait for his recommendations and then respond.
Laura, in regards to that one, this is for new housing or this is for remodeling? I mean, because it's part of the housing element, it feels like it's part of new, new stuff, is it? You with the existing housing stock as well?
The housing element doesn't speak to that level of specificity. Um, right now, the more strict rules apply to new buildings and then there's less strict rules that apply to existing buildings. And we would expect that to continue unless the council directed otherwise. But that's a council level decision when we propose that to you every three years. Um, so then that takes us over to number 11 is the other thing. Um, oh, you skipped over eight, nine, 10, or, or do they all fall under what you just said or? Um, all of those are just within the fire district's, um, authority and purview. They're all things that we would, that they would recommend to us. There's no action for the town to take except to talk about it when they propose something.
Eleven?
Um, eleven is already in the housing element that says when maps are available, we'll adopt one. Um, the state law basically requires that we do that anyway. So we have a commitment to that through our housing element and through state law. Um, and then number 12 is already in the housing element as well. So, um, most of it is. So when the new maps come out, um, our housing element says that we'll revisit the ADU and SB9 ordinance. Um, but implied within that too is to revisit the safety checklist. So you might all recall, we have the separate safety checklist that applies to certain ADUs and SB9 buildings. So maybe in that case, we just need to align the language, um, in the two places. Um, but I think we've got that pretty well covered too.
Um, it says not started yet, so that, who hasn't started that? Because it's, you, I thought I heard you say that's mostly done.
Um, number 12, it's not started because the maps aren't adopted yet. So once the maps are adopted, then, um, we would start that work. And there's a timeline in the housing element, I believe, but.
Okay, got it.
So in terms of the things that are within the town's purview, we have a fair amount of accountability already. And we could certainly weave the other ones into the post, um, adoption plan.
And number thirteen is on here. It's clearly the fire protection district's purview to educate the public on key fire safety issues. Um, so just remind me what the housing element program sixty-six is.
Um, just a second.
Like what would our, the towns will be here?
Um, the town's role is through the wildfire preparedness committee on this one because they do most of our town outreach on this. So my recommendation would be when the fire marshal comes to speak with you, tell him, you know, have that conversation, that dialogue. And then maybe you, the town council could give direction to the wildfire preparedness committee about how you would like to see that implemented. Um, program six-six is pretty, um, general related to that. So it's like work with the fire officials to educate homeowners and landlords, community meetings, mailers, community events, those types of things.
But is this, does this effectively come down to whether we put it in the post housing just as an accountability versus a sense that we're already doing this stuff? I mean, is that really the choice?
Different categories, yeah.
Some of them are things that, well, it's just in that process and some of them are things that are, well, a part of the safety. Some of them are in the element.
Right, you know, so there's a bunch that I think like check the box, like they're done. And then there were some of either we put them in post housing adoption plan or we just say we're, we're working on it. They're in part of the, I mean, that sort of seems like the choice.
Yep.
And then I could, it may be helpful, I can tell you from an implementation point of view, what we imagine doing is taking um, all of the tasks and the timelines from the housing element itself, the post-adoption process. And, um, you know, presumably using project management software to track all of that. So, um, if accountability on these items is important to the council, um, collecting them in that one place of the post-approval plan, I, I do see value in from a staff point of view.
I'm trying to think of the ways to reflect this, to make everybody feel comfortable. And I mean, I counted out of the 13, there were four that, um, were flagged by Laura as possible for post-approval. And would, would making another motion to amend kind of the motion that we made about post-approval for those items make sense? Or I don't even know if that's possible, but I'm just trying to get to a point where things are documented in a way that makes people feel comfortable.
Let me put it this way, um, this would really useful. And I do think updating the housing element plan on the items discussed, um, that were proposed that there and would be helpful to be there. I'm probably going to line up with, I'm, I just don't have my bearings enough to vote on a motion here, but I'm also not trying to convey that there's big issues. I think there's, uh, framework that we just discussed that I'd really like to think through, but I'm, I need a little bit of pressure of mine to make sure that I really understand the moving pieces. But this is super helpful and I think did save some time for the next week for me.
Is there something that staff could do to kind of help bring it along for next time? Should we try to take some of these key approaches and think about how it could fit into the post-approval plan?
Yep. I think working with the items on this chart that you have and adding another column about where you think we should come out on it. I, I'd like to see that and it would probably be a pretty quick discussion at that point.
Well, I don't, I mean, would we want to put in the same format as the rest of the topics that we had, like just take these four things and turn them into topics?
Or, or wed them into an existing topic because one or two of these might, you might just add a little phrase or there. So yeah, I mean.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm, I'm obviously trying to think about the most expeditious way that meets the council's needs. Um, we may be able to do it through a motion again, by identifying those things, um, making sure that we have the buy-in of the council. And then asking the, um, subcommittee along with staff to integrate them in during the 30 days. Um, once everyone has had a chance to think about it. So what staff can do is we can go back and, um, annotate this table a little bit more with some of this discussion that we're having here late, um, so that it makes it easier to, to move on with that. Does that sound agreeable?
For me, I'm not, it's just getting to be too late for me to think straight about some of these. I don't, I don't think we're very far apart and I don't think it's going to take long in a meeting and wouldn't vote on it tonight.
Yeah, I guess I was trying to get, where, where are we going to get the language? I mean, we're going to, it, it, will the language be ready by like Friday and be in the next packet? So we have something to talk about and vote, I mean, that's my only concern is I, I just don't want this to turn into, we get to next Wednesday and then we're trying to figure out the language and we can't vote on it because we haven't got the language. So that's, we're just, this is just a process question.
So I could work with Laura to get her initial feedback on the bucket to confirm the different ones.
Can I ask, well, several of these are going to fall under the, the, the housing element, the post, the post-adoption process that you're going to be hashing. And the two of you are going to be hashing out over the 30 days. And the two of you are going to be hashing out over the thirty days after we approve the housing element. I mean, can you, could the two of you just incorporate those into that thirty day where you hash out that process?
It, well, it's not a, if we don't have it in what we approve now, it's an agreement to be on some thing. So I'm looking for a nexus to a commitment to put a specific thing into the plan. And if we're even bothering to do that, why not just update the plan? I mean, it, it's not gonna be a lot of work uh, to come up with either for new uh, topics or to integrate them in. I, I just don't see it being big, but to Craig's point, we want it to be a ministerial when we get to next week, it's possible, right?
So Jeff, I think we can get what you want. I, I think, why don't we let Judith, and, and I'm welcome to join as well. But if Judith and Laura can just work on the four t- topics, it doesn't have to be put into our thing, but just in that same kind of format. So the next meeting, we could say, and we agree, these additional things will go into the post-housing adoption plan. And we could basically have a motion on those four and, and that would, we'd be done.
Okay.
So I, I think that'll get what you want and it'll get what Judith wants, which is, and what I want, which is at least some wording so that we are in substantial agreement on the four things that are gonna get into the more detailed plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. Cool.
Okay, what else? I guess what I'm asking is, are we, if we can hammer out the MMRP on this question of the chief elements. It's comfortable with the four guys and be as part of that group. The public comments are just, yes, there's nothing, or the conversation in the more.
I mean, almost by definition at this point, but no, no, I, I take, I take your question and then, no, I think we hashed out the pieces and we've got a, a, a plan, action plan on those pieces. So we should be well, well set up for next week.
Um, no, this is a lot of feedback. Um, as you can imagine, we, our team has a lot of work to do in two business days um, to get you a packet for the next meeting. So we're gonna be working really hard on that. And then um, I really encourage council members to have conversations with myself and Cara in advance of the meeting. I respect very much um, the need to provide transparency to the public. Um, sometimes um, what council members do is ask me a question, we talk it through. And then they ask me again in the meetings to make sure that the public has the benefit of hearing that. So if those of you that are still out there, that's a really common thing that happens and it's a good thing. It gives us a chance to talk to council members. It gets, we air out issues, we talk things through. Um, and then the public gets the benefit of that as well. So if that works for any of the five of you, please let Cara and myself know um, in the interest of having the, the most um, efficient, productive meeting next week.
Part of next week's meeting. Uh, item eight, we is on agency reports that are handful in here, uh, comments on the-
Oh, well, I was gonna give my uh, report because I thought it was uh, interesting. And I thought uh, it showed how well our priorities are working, taken to the, um, to the committees. This is the geological safety. Um, they really got it, how it fit together. They uh, understand that set policy, but they're just uh, there for, to advise us. But they have asked is that we give a geologist, uh, who we met this evening, that we have, they have some access to the, uh, to the consultant. Uh, like as much as an hour a month or at least an hour every three months where he could come to a, a meeting and discuss things with them in their meeting. And I, I thought that was reasonable because I think one of the reasons you're getting um, there's, there's just a communicate, a big communication gap, gap between the consult, the geology consultant and, and the geological safety committee. We're about to have a really good geological safety committee that's uh, with any luck at all and onboard. Um, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking to see whether that would be, how extensive that would be. Uh, cause I think in the long run, it'd save everybody a lot of time to not be fighting against the geological, the local geological, meaning.
Yeah, my apologies. I did not uh, submit my trails, maybe notes and there, it's quick. Um, they've been very busy. Uh, they are gonna plan the first horse there since three times, which should be great fun and everyone should try and turn out for in some fashion. They are working on safe routes to school, updated maps, and they're having some uh, complications in terms of figuring out, you know, biking versus walking areas in certain trails. Uh, so they're gonna work that out and continue to work with Howard and others on that. Um, they are also trying to evaluate the timing for crosswalk uh, beacons to be set out at places that meet those trails. So stay tuned. Ideally, those are in place for the next full year, but, but there's some process there that has to be worked through. And last, there, there are some signage updates that they are contemplating making. It was a great meeting, but those were the key items and my apologies for not reducing it to that.
And so are these beacons a permanent installation or are these, they put up temporarily? What's, what's-
Howard knows more than I, he's been in those discussions longer.
Yeah, so these are the rapid flashing beacons that did go to the ASCC for discussion and then would be BTS as part of the pedestrian safety study. So um, they're, and they're expecting rapid flashing beacons um, on Portola Road in front of the prairie and also at Alpine Road in front of the swimming tennis club. And these are similar to the ones that you see in Ladera, when someone presses the button and the lights flash on the side of the road so people can clock.
Are they different from the one that already exists at the prairie?
Yes, those are in, in pavement uh, crosswalk lights. Uh, there's a lot of maintenance that goes into those because you have to shut down the road when something goes off. So many agencies are not doing the, the in-pavement lights anymore. So they're going to their rapid flashing beacons.
So they're taking those out at the prairie?
They don't work, they haven't worked in a minute.
Oh. Okay. Just don't put in a cement pad before you get on those crosswalks. Okay, so the horses don't slip, just.
Um, there's not gonna be a cement pad, but we'll have to look at it potentially landing spots if we move the crosswalks a little bit. Did I answer your question, Craig, concerning the lighted cross, lighted rapid flashing beacons?
Yeah, I guess I get, I, I understand it. I'm, I'm not sure quite where it fits with the general plan, lack of signage and some other stuff. But that's for another conversation. The, the other question I had on the, the trails, the bike and the pedestrian, I mean, are they looking to try to, you know, evolve the multi-use?
That, that's been part of their discussion. I, I think they're midway through evaluating um, certain easements seem to be more limited and they're trying to work through property rights along certain trails that are more frequently used. But stay tuned, they're, it's a work in the park.
Oh, thank you. I'm just gonna give a quick update on the storm, storm update here. So we had approximately five inches of rain yesterday, uh, really heavy rain and wind. Uh, we started getting calls really last night. Um, we did end up with some land and mudslides on Grove, Alpine Hills and Upper Alpine and some overflow mud debris on Alpine and Bear Gulch. Uh, much of the mud was from private property and so we're in discussions with the adjacent residents. We had our crews and contractors lined up first thing this morning. There was a closure on a, a, a slide that closed Grove Court and, and something neat happened there that I wanted to share. Uh, we did have to place the, the, the mud that we collected today was really liquidy, so the dumps don't take that. So uh, we had to stage that at Ford Field until it dries out and then we'll haul it off uh, along with the rest of the mud that was there from last month. Uh, they take about a week to clean up things around town. Uh, our public works crews continue to be proactive. At the end of the day, basically, uh, we have all of our roads open. We don't have any closed roads. We have a narrowing of a road up in, uh, Upper Alpine because of, because of a slide. But as of the end of today, we've gotten everything cleared. There are no road closures in town. Uh, I think we did fairly well considering the amount of rain and wind that we got. Uh, we did get a lot of calls, uh, and we're trying to help everyone out as we can. The one neat thing is on, on the road closure on Grove last night, um, a certain person got involved. Kurt, Kurt Taylor, um, that helped us uh, again, get a hold of the uh, four or five residents that were trapped in because of the landslide and contacted them. So that's, that's really surprising and that helped out. Some, something worked uh, uh, in, in that neighborhood. And he took a charge of it and contacted them. It saves us time from calling every one of those uh, people uh, cause there was, wasn't any access. And also the public works committee went out last night and it's uh, just a shout out to Bob Boyle again. Uh, going out and actually doing physical work uh, last night and showing up and taking calls late at night. So those, those are the things that kind of worked out. So uh, all in all, I think we did okay.
Thank you.
There's a question on, where the mic?
I'm noticing that um, Little League is starting this Saturday and noticed a lot of mud and where they may park. I'm wondering when the mud can be removed from, so they could be successful and not put a lot of cars on Alpine Road since they can't park in the parking lot. So is there a way to take the mud away um, for the Little League?
So we're, we're aware and we have, we've actually contacted them today concerning the mud. So hopefully in the upcoming weeks when things dry out, uh, and we can load it up and haul it off. So that's what we're looking forward to, but we, we, we are aware, we're in communication.
And there's a hand up from Rita Combs. Rita, go ahead.
Yes, well, congratulations, Howard, on uh, your new responsibilities. Hopefully your other responsibilities can be shared with other people so that you can focus on this uh, probably challenging job. Uh, but I, I just wanna ask about the, the road closures yesterday on Alpine Road. Uh, you know, there was misinformation sent out by the sheriff's department saying that the road was open. And unfortunately, I then came after picking up my daughter early from school um, right into it. Uh, so she got to see uh, the situation because of the misinformation and I was trying to avoid that. Uh, I don't know what kind of coordination we can do with um, you know, with that. I know our, our sheriff, if that message came from the sheriff's department. Uh, you know, there was lots of uh, trees down going along Restor Darrow. We were pretty, pretty shut into the town uh, yesterday. And uh, with the wind, you know, there were, there were trees down on Portola Road. Uh, and I'm just concerned about when we do have a situation where we have to evacuate. Uh, what can we do in, in those? You know, should we all just drive around with uh, chainsaws? But um, congratulations again, but I, I really hope when we're, we're working on evacuation plans and um, you know, just, just big, bigger than this rain and wind. Uh, we, we have some more options because we have no electricity. There's no zone haven, that there's no electricity in wifi. And um, we, we have to have accurate communications. So thank you in any way that you can follow up on, on these and I gladly talk to you uh, offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If no other comments on the town manager's reports, then I'm gonna move on to-
Motion to adjourn.
Paul Tabor?
Hi.
Hi.
Quick clarification, the closed session on this agenda was moved to six o'clock tonight. So that's why we're not going to that one. So thank you all. Good night.